Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Aspen City Council regular meeting for July 23rd, 2024. That's a call to order. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Guth.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
Here. Just for clarification, Counselor Guth is out of the state. He is participating remotely. Due to our rules and regulations that we have regarding remote participation, he is able to participate in a majority of the meeting. However, certain quasi judicial matters, for example, our public hearings tonight, extension of vested rights, things like that, participation may be limited. We need video to work, but if that works, he can participate. So we'll see how well his connection holds up. Thanks for being with us, Bill.
Thank you. Please let me know if I should turn off the video at any point.
So far, so good. No scheduled public appearances, which will bring us right to citizens' comments and petitions. Please, this is an opportunity for folks to address counsel on issues not scheduled for a public hearing. We do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity to speak this evening. Are there members of the public that wish to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Is the mic on?
It looks like it is.
Great. First, my name is Bart Johnson, and I'm here to speak on a matter that's on your agenda, but it's not set for a public hearing. It involves the Park Avenue construction project. So I just wanted to make sure you weren't going to open that up for public comment. If you were, I could defer my comments until then.
No, I'd prefer to take your comments now. Thank you so much.
Sure. So I sent you guys a letter. I'm a local land use attorney, and I represent the owners of 315 and 317 Park Avenue, David Chason and John Prunskus. And they've been engaged with your staff over this project because they own the property that will be most affected by the Park Avenue construction project. As you may know, the right of way in that area is kind of misshapen and much wider than it needs to be. Their driveway extends across it, and because of the nature of the project, they're going to bear the brunt of the work. Their driveway will be completely ripped out and have to be replaced. I believe the city has agreed to do that. My letter identifies some questions about how exactly that's going to happen. There's also a significant perennial garden, partially on their property, partially within the street right of way. There's been a lot of conversation about committing to restore that garden. It kind of serves as essentially a privately owned public amenity for people walking down Park Avenue, heading to smuggling back, and things of that nature. My letter to you details kind of what they hope is a better understanding of how the plan for that restoration of that garden will work, in particular, the ability to engage kind of a private consultant to help oversee that restoration. In particular, and there's some other things identified in my letter, potentially, construction management and how access to their property will maintain during the course of construction and along Park Avenue. And again, the driveway is probably the most important factor because their driveway is going to get shorter and steeper. It's already steep. You won't probably be able to park cars in the driveway, as have been parked in the past. And so as you consider this construction project in the spring, they're basically hoping for continued engagement with your staff and would hope that you encourage that to occur.
Thank you very much. Did you forward that letter to the clerk's office as well as council members?
I did. I sent it through the Transportation Department staff, Carly.
Okay.
Because that's who had been interacting with Mr. Chason and Mr. Prunskus.
It has been provided to all of council through the clerk's office today.
Okay.
Excuse me, you're Bart Johnson?
I am, yes.
Just put it in the face to piece of paper.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good to see you, Bart.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I do see that as the clerk's office having that. Thank you. Other members of the public with public comment this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Neil Siegel, Aspen. At your August 5th work session, staff will report on 10 tasks relative to the Castle Creek Bridge project. There's going to be a lot of information at that work session, but perhaps the most important will be the last two. One, dealing with an assessment of updated federal NEPA alternatives and a report on building a new three lane bridge within or very close to the existing right of way. Now, despite a fair amount of confusion, due in part to some incomplete reporting in a local paper, I am hopeful that staff will provide clarity and a way forward. The city's experts have reported from HNTB back in November 2022 to Jacobs this year that the current bridge is in bad shape. CDOT has the option to continue to repair it or replace it. Again, both experts and CDOT agree that the existing bridge can be replaced. And it can be replaced without touching or reopening the record of decision. That is also clear. One way to proceed among the myriad of alternatives is to request a categorical exclusion. I'm sure it'll be discussed again, or hopefully it'll be discussed again, on August 5th. That approach is fully consistent with federal law. It's not a shortcut. It's not a trick. It's fully consistent among all of the alternatives available to proceed. What CDOT is looking for now is direction from the city. Let me be more precise. What CDOT is looking for is direction from you. The choice is whether to build a new bridge now in the current location or to keep repairing it well into the future with all of the uncertainty that goes with delay. There is only one sensible decision council can make. It has been extensively studied. The facts are clear. CDOT is looking to Aspen for direction, and the citizens are looking to you to provide it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go online. I have a commenter online. John, are you there? Can you hear me? Can you unmute?
Good afternoon. Yes, I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes. Are you able to hear me okay?
We got you, yes.
Thank you. I want to just echo what Mr. Johnson said earlier. And for us, the most desirable outcome of this project would be, of course, we support the placement of the sewers. We support the placement of the sidewalk. However, what is, there's a sidewalk already there that just needs to be filled in, and the road would not have to be widened. Obviously, it would have to be reconstructed to put in new sewers. So that's our number one request. If that's not something that the city council, you know, sees eye to eye with on us, then the next step is, some of the questions we have, which were articulated earlier, in no particular order, it's going to take a significant portion of our driveway, which is snowmelted. We've respectfully requested that they replace that. It's not a big driveway. We submitted pictures, too, to give you an idea of the size of the driveway. It can currently hold two pickup trucks back to back. And that's from the garage door front to the street. So we respectfully request that, since they're going to tear up the driveway, and they say they're going to increase the incline of the driveway, we ask that they replace the driveway with the snowmelt. And for the area that they're removing, there's a small area that actually is less than the area that they're removing, that we request that they provide snowmelt, and pictures have been provided. We don't really understand, or I should say, agree with raising the pitch of the driveway. Instead, we respect, if you're going to put bulldozers in there, lower the road so you don't have an increased pitch. We're requesting also, again intuitively, we can't figure out why on the downhill side of the road there are no curbs, yet on the uphill side of the road there are curbs installed. You would think intuitively it should be the reverse. They gave us an answer which didn't make common sense to us. They, and it said, "We're putting in a grate to catch water in front of our driveway." That doesn't make sense. If you're spending all this money on the project, why would you put a stopgap grate to catch water on a downhill slope where you don't have curbs, but you have curbs on the uphill slope? And finally, at least in our research, there's never been any pedestrian vehicle incident, but there has been vehicle to vehicle incident pulling out of our driveway. And we've requested a stop sign at Park and Midland. And so that would conclude my remarks. And again, our first, I'm sorry, then there's the issue of the gardens, which were very well articulated by Mr. Johnson. But in conclusion, looking at it, every which way, there is a sidewalk that needs to be filled in that's already there. We, of course, support increased better drainage, support sewers, which would not require widening the current road. And somebody, sometime in the past, we, I've been coming to Aspen since 1976, but I just acquired this property, I think about, let's say, four or five years ago. Somebody somewhere approved this whole thing. And, you know, when you buy certain properties, of course, you do due diligence, but you don't think it's going to be so massively impacted as proposed. So thanks very much for your time. I don't know if you have any questions or not, but that's your privilege, but thank you.
Thank you. For the record, that was John Prunskus. He's the owner at 317, I believe. Bill, did you have a question for now?
Yes, please. I'd just like to request and see if we have support amongst the four of you to request staff provide responses to Mr. Johnson's letter that we received today, that we understand their.
The item is scheduled for our consent calendar, and we will pull it off of the calendar then.
Thank you.
Yep. Other members of the public for public comment this evening? Rachel? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Richards, and I live at 816 Hunter Creek. The smoke today we're seeing is from Canada, not the wildfires in California or Oregon, but they certainly remind Aspen residents that we live in fire country and that we do not have adequate roads to handle a mass fire evacuation. I'm here to talk about wasted time. And I know that some very deeply caring people have been involved in trying to find a different solution for the entrance to Aspen. Unfortunately, that time was wasted by pursuing only the Jacobson report 14 months ago instead of beginning an EIS process and concurrently developing and submitting a three lane solution to that. Counter to other things we've heard, we've all seen the CDOT letter, posted on the Castle Creek Bridge website. And I believe CDOT tells us in no uncertain terms that an EIS, or at least a supplemental, will be needed to change the design and the record of decision for the entrance to Aspen. And again, that's something you could have begun 14 months ago. And when CDOT told you in March that you would need an EIS. But we've gone back and asked them a second time. Do we really, Aspen, special Aspen, need to do the same processes that everyone else getting federal highway dollars does? Well, we've told them some other interesting things, too. We told CDOT, "We're so wealthy, we can self-fund it. We don't need federal transportation dollars once we decide what we're really going to build." Now, they said they still want the EIS, but we can probably pay for it ourselves because we told them we could afford to. And we also told them with that submittal that Aspen believes it needs a four lane exit for general traffic at the end of the day. Two unrestricted lanes. That was what was in the Jacobson report with a little new traffic light for a little bus bump. So where are we now? What is it, what do we do now? Can we start public meetings with neighborhoods, the community, RFTA, the agencies and businesses on the other side of the Castle Creek Bridge? People that you have consistently not talked to in the past 14 months? Can we start having a real dialogue? There's rumors about a vote coming up, a potential vote of some sort, which our community knows nothing about right now. Maybe we'll hear about it later. But is the community prepared for a vote? And will a vote tell CDOT anything? And will another vote next March, when there's an election, or anytime a citizen gathers 900 signatures, change the outcome of federal laws and federal responsibilities and the state's responsibilities to the traveling public? I don't think so, but I really look forward to the outreach. I look forward to beginning to hear people tell you what they think about that traffic on Main Street in July and how you are or aren't going to begin managing future traffic growth in the downtown. Because our streets are overwhelmed and over congested and not dealing with things like enforcing the HOV lane. That would be a very constructive step that the city council could put into its budget for 2025. And we declined to do so a couple of years ago. But I think you need to start moving, and we need to think about fire safety. And we need to think about what we really do to get this thing built in time. Thank you very much for your time. And I'd like to say one last word. I do believe those who have been trying to say, "How can we save the Morolt? How can we not use the Morolt?" are truly deeply caring people in this community, for the most part. And I think that it would behoove all of us to start talking about how we can design the Morolt solution better than just continue to push down on a solution that you're not willing to put into an EIS process for comparison of whether it would be effective 30 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public for public comment this evening?
I'm an Aspen resident for 32 years, Francis Stuckins. Hi, Torrey, John, Ward. I don't know anybody else personally. I agree about reducing the volume of cars. And I think a great way to do that would be a train. On, you know, the Rio Grande easement, that's how they used to get oysters up here back in the mining days. I think that'd be a good idea to look at. And there's probably the bucks somewhere in all the tax revenue that we're making here to be able to get that done. And with less cars, Bart's thing at 317 Park Avenue might be a little easier to handle, too. That's all I know. What I came here to talk about, one, we have this bag thing going on. I'm trying to figure out what we can do for a place like Carl's Pharmacy, where there's a volume of customers, and we're asking them to buy a $3 recycled bag. It's pretty big, and, you know, but nobody remembers to get it out of their car or bring it from home. Stuff like that. I'm thinking maybe there's some kind of exemption that we could do to be able to offer, you know, bags for six packs or whatever, as long as they're recyclable and compostable. And if we could do that, it might also encourage the city to hook up more with Evergreen Zero Waste and put some more stations out there. But that depends on education, too, about this because a lot of people don't love our town as much as those who live here and they're visiting. I don't want to say anything negative. I love Aspen. The other thing is Green Cuisine Aspen is in good standing with the state of Colorado as a nonprofit. So I'm thinking of contacting Lauren Maiden, who I know, and in accordance with normal, and seeing if we can get some kind of consumption of cannabis lounge. And that might be more tax revenue and could pay for a train. Also, last thing, John, I'd love to see you at Cady and. Also, uh, last thing, uh, John, I'd love to see you at, uh, Katie and Kay and we, we can carpool. Uh, uh, you know, and talk about the Rolling Stones experience, um, that you had. That'd be nice. And Tori, you, you've been there before and, uh, I promise I won't put my foot, uh, anywhere except, uh, near the microphone. If you guys want to come down.
Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, and talk about issues because they listen in Aspen too. All right, it's warm in here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Francis. Uh, other members of the public for public comment this evening? And one last call, public comment this evening? All right, I'll bring it back to council table then. Want to remind everybody that we highly encourage, uh, public comment. If there's anything that you want to address council on, please, we want to, uh, make sure to ensure a safe and comfortable environment for you to come and, uh, air grievances, make requests, give suggestions, whatever you like. So please join us here for, uh, council meetings. We start the meetings with that public comment, so you, you won't be here too long. Uh, council members, comments this evening? Ward?
Yeah, thank, thank you. Um, we must all globally, nationally and locally aspire to embrace, acknowledge and respect differences of opinion without negatively affecting personal relationships. We have to be able to, to disagree without blame and retribution. Nothing brings us home stronger than, uh, the assassination attempt on, uh, Trump. Gambling in the future of Aspen and Pickman County by projecting that the FAA and C dot are saber rattling and bluffing, um, i- yeah, I think it's a dangerous, uh, gamble. We stand to lose hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, for government funding for the airport and the entrance to Aspen. Uh, and on top of that, uh, the outcomes may be less, uh, responsive to the city values, our citizen values. Our challenge is to assure economic stability without additional growth while maintaining our community fabric. So we, we have challenges, but we also have, uh, responsibility to listen to each other respectfully and going forward in, uh, a community spirit. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. Comments this evening? John?
Uh, a little environmental news, um, Sunday. Sunday, July twenty-first, the world's hottest day ever logged was recorded by, uh, the Europeania, European Climate Service Copernicus. Uh, they average all the temperatures around the world to come up with this figure. And it is continuing to climb. The last thirteen months on earth have been the hottest thirteen months on the planet. Yesterday, Denver had the worst air quality in, in the whole of the United States because of the forest fires in Canada. There are forest fires bringing to the west of us in Utah, but most of the smoke is coming from Canada. And lastly, some good news, uh, US solar and wind power generation have topped nuclear power for the first time. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Bill, any comments?
None for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I've got a few, uh,
Bless you.
Bless you. Uh, first of all, I wanted to let the public know about the Armory Open House. That's right, we're going back for another round of Armory Hall input from the public. City of Aspen will host an open house on Wednesday, July thirty-first from four to seven PM. Uh, this will be at the Armory. Um, we, as we're moving forward, we've, uh, you know, come across a couple of challenges and I think we'll probably come across more. Uh, but right now we are kind of at a fork in the road where we need to decide about some direction for what's going to be in the Armory. So we want to include the public in those discussions. Uh, please, uh, come out and, um, Wednesday, July thirty-first, four to seven PM. Uh, if you can't make it to that open house though, you can see the design concepts at aspencommunityvoice.com. Uh, and there will be a survey available there, uh, for about two weeks, July thirty-first to August fourteenth. The nondiscrimination ordinance that some of you might have, uh, heard me talking about before as, uh, city council is updating Aspen's nondiscrimination ordinance, uh, after forty-seven years. We want the public involved in that as well. Um, we take your input on aspencommunityvoice.com to make any comments and you can also, uh, review the proposed language there as well. Uh, can I see a show of hands? Did anybody take advantage of donuts with cops today?
Well, their donuts were gone.
Then good. Somebody got to him before Ward did. Um, well, if you missed that, or even if you didn't miss that, the next one is the Aspen Police Department is hosting its annual ice cream social on August fourteenth. That's at Sister Cities Plaza, right next to Wagner Park, eleven to one, or until they run out. So Ward, get there earlier. Um, and, uh, you'll have all of the APD out there saying hello, meet and greet, uh, other members of our community. Again, uh, that's next to Wagner Park, eleven to one on August fourteenth. Uh, speaking of surveys, Aspen Community Survey, uh, is still open on the community website. Um, so again, you can go to aspen.gov to access the survey. We kept it open for a little bit longer. We've gotten great response, but we wanted to, um, give the opportunity for a couple of other targeted groups to continue to give us a little bit more input. So please go on to aspen.gov, look at the community survey. Um, it, it, it is very helpful for what we do up here to know where, uh, the community sentiment and priorities are. So please take a moment and fill out the survey. And then, uh, the community picnic this year, the community picnic is going to take on a little bit different form. It is going to be in Wagner Park this year. Um, and, um, there's going to be a talent show. We're going to make this an old-fashioned community get-together with a talent show. So all of you that want to share your talents, uh, please go to aspenspecialevents.com to sign up and learn more about the event as well. Again, that's going to be on a Sunday, August eighteenth, uh, from one to three PM, with the talent show being right in the middle at two PM. Uh, we are planning on free food and drinks out at the park, uh, for the first seven hundred and fifty folks. We are expecting a large turnout. We hope that everybody can join us in Wagner Park. Uh, and then two, uh, comments from me. I have actually, uh, some requests for council members, uh, that have come in to me and I wanted to share those with you. Uh, the first one, uh, comes to us from the Risado Festival, uh, that is going to be returning to Aspen on the seventeenth and eighteenth. Uh, last year, city council was nice enough to sponsor free RFTA rides up the valley for those that were coming to attend the community day for Risado Festival. Um, if, uh, any of you remember, last year was in Rio Grande Park with a band Los Lobos playing for free. It was a wonderful event. Um, and this council was nice enough to sponsor free bus rides, uh, and free bus fare, I should say, for, uh, RFTA riders that were coming to this event. Uh, this year, uh, Risado, uh, well, let me be clear. Last year, uh, we had fifty-eight people take us up on that free ride offer. Um, those rides are at two dollars. They are a special RFTA ride for two dollars apiece, uh, meaning that last year, uh, it was a hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, RFTA ended up picking up that tab and not needing the city funds directly. Um, this year, the request is from Risado for the seventeenth and eighteenth. Um, and again, they would love the city of Aspen to sponsor the RFTA fairs. Um, so I, my request is to council members, um, for a placeholder, uh, for taking care of RFTA fairs, uh, for Risado Festival users. Now, what they have to do is not just any rider, but they do have to go on to access a QR code in order to get the discounted fare, which then is, um, uh, taken care of by either the city of Aspen or RFTA. My request to, uh, council members is for, uh, a placeholder of six hundred dollars for the two days of RFTA ridership if it reaches those levels. Um, if it doesn't reach that level, we will not expend that much money. Um, I'd love to hear if I have support for that from council contingency funds. Um, and if you need more information, I'm happy to come back to you at our next scheduled meeting. Uh, Bill, I'll go to you, uh, just if you have any questions or support or non-support for this request.
Is supportive. Could you just remind us all where, what the location of the festival will be?
So this year, uh, because the community picnic is going to be in Wagner Park on Sunday, the eighteenth, the location this year will be at the Meadows. Um, and, uh, the Saturday is a community day, similar to the Los Lobos, but probably not quite that, uh, that act level. Um, and then the Sunday is more of a community and kids' day. But both will be on the Meadows campus.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ward supportive?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hundred percent.
John, great. Thank you. Um, and then I did have another request to ask council about. With the, uh, management and, uh, operators of the Motherload Volleyball Tournament, uh, have come in to, uh, have sent me an email to request, um, some, uh, help from city council. Uh, they have, uh, focused only on the event permitting fees that they, uh, see this year. Last year, their fees were about two thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. Um, and this year, because of council action, uh, with parks fees, uh, restructuring last year, their fees will go up to, uh, thirty-seven hundred dollars. The request from the Motherload Volleyball Tournament is for some help. Um, what they said in their email is that they, um, appreciate a ten percent annual increase in their fees. Um, but beyond that, it does make it difficult for them, uh, in, in more and more challenging times to throw events in Aspen. They're seeking some relief. Doing the math on that, the difference between a ten percent increase to last year's two thousand four hundred and eleven dollar fees, uh, would be two hundred and forty dollars added on about, let's call it twenty-seven hundred dollars. Um, their new fees are around thirty-seven hundred dollars. My math is a little off. Anyway, the request to council is to offset that difference. Essentially a twelve hundred dollar request from the Motherload Volleyball Tournament. Again, this would come from council contingency funds. Um, and I'm here to represent the Motherload Volleyball Tournament in request for those funds. Once again, Bill, I'll start with you since you're online.
Yes.
Thank you. Other council members?
Yeah, this, this term has been going on, I think, as long as I've been in town. And I full, I fully support auto contingency fund.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And myself as well as supportive of that, if we could arrange that council contingency. Thank you very much. I appreciate your consideration of those two items. Um, that is all for my comments at this time. And let me get back to agenda. Uh, I did want to address a few of the public comments that we had. Um, I would be interested, Sarah, uh, maybe i- if I could get some help from environmental health about the bags. I think the legislation came down from the state that required e- either a fee on all bags or the elimination of them. I, I, I sympathize a little bit with what's going on. Um, you know, uh, paper, bottle, sleeve bags, things like that, that, um, certain vendors may see as important to how they deliver their product. I'm interested in what the parameters are of what the municipality can do. Uh, I'm definitely not interested in turning back the clock on any plastic bags. I'm not interested in turning back the clock on large service bags that you get from the grocery stores. But I think there may be some specialty bags here that really shouldn't have been caught up in some of what's going on. Or at least we should be looking towards, moving towards maybe what the suggestion was, compostables, uh, in that same, uh, uh, supply. So it, maybe if I could just get some information from environmental health about what the municipality has the ability to do and that, that would be helpful to me. So as an information request. Um, I wanted to, uh, just say to Rachel Richards, who was here earlier, is that, um, going back to Jacob's Engineering for more information, my primary request from that was to understand more about what the actual preferred alternative is. Um, in the original record of decision, I believe the preferred alternative is stated as a two-lane parkway with a transit corridor in preparation for the possibility of light rail. At some point, perhaps that was changed for the language to reflect allowing bus lanes temporarily while the light rail becomes more of a reality. But the last iteration that we saw was for, uh, two lanes of general traffic, one in and one out. Two lanes of, uh, bus lanes only, one in and one out. A transit corridor as well as shoulder widths. Um, and I just don't support that kind of platform coming across some rolled open space. Do I have any support for potentially, uh, modified, uh, plans to that? Something that reflects more of the original record of decision that's a two-lane parkway? Possibly, but that was my request of Jacob's, uh, engineering. I'm looking, looking forward to that information coming back. There is still a lot of information about the S-curves that I still don't understand about what we can accommodate through there, um, and the like. So truly, I'm looking for more information. I'm excited for our meetings that are coming up in August. Um, to Neil who pointed out to us that, um, there's a lot of information that is to come to us on that meeting date. Actually, Sarah, uh, pulled me aside today to talk about exactly how we're going to handle that volume of infor- information. And we may have to, um, even, uh, split it up into two meetings, but we're going to meet more on that tomorrow. Anyway, those are my comments this evening. Uh, thank you for indulging me. Uh, I don't see any agenda amendments in, in front of us, so that'll bring us to city managers' comments tonight.
Good evening, members of council. Just a few things for you tonight. Uh, we're happy to bring back information on the bags. Um, just in summary, the, um, exemption from that bag fee is extremely limited and it typically has to do with pharmaceutical prescription drugs, um, being the exempt form of bag. But the, the law is pretty specific to include, um, retail pharm- pharmacy sales, uh, liquor sales, really any sales except for those that were, were outlined in the bill itself back in twenty twenty-one when it was passed. Secondly, uh, I did want to let the council know that we will, um, be at, where the staff are at City Market every Saturday, uh, with different things for the community, uh, to gather their input. Um, I did want to make a special note that on, uh, August tenth, that staff will be at the market, uh, specifically on the Castle Creek Bridge. Uh, and I'd actually encourage and ask that we schedule the council to be attending there and figure out a format of which does not create a quorum, um, so that you are also hearing these voices that staff are hearing from the community on that date. So the farmer's market's eight thirty to two that day, I believe, um, August tenth. So, uh, Jen will reach out to you individually about scheduling, but we really would appreciate, um, if possible, uh, as much participation from the council, um, in a listening session there, um, for a lot of different views from the community. And then staff will be available for technical questions that, um, may be more, more appropriate for our staff ones. Uh, also, you recently received a, um, survey for, uh, your governance workshop. Not everyone's had an opportunity to complete that. Uh, those of you that have not, if you would please get that wrapped up so we can complete that, uh, material back to you. It would be very helpful. Thank you. Um, the last thing I just had to share with the council is the city of Aspen is the recipient of a More Housing Now grant, um, through some of the leadership of, uh, our current governor and the Department of Local Affairs. The city of Aspen was awarded the maximum grant of two million dollars for phase zero of the lumberyard, uh, which is a huge contribution from the state in believing in the program, uh, and participating in that public hearing process. And we are, um, looking forward to that because we, we are, uh, in the process right now of, um, making arrangements for the last folks to be leaving the mini-storage and we'll be bringing forward a phase zero demolition contract, uh, for you, uh, here soon. Uh, ideally, the, still this year, but we think this is a great, great signal that the state believes in this project for it to award it. But we think this is a great, great signal that the state believes in this project for it to award it the maximum possible award. Thank you.
Sarah, did that award, grant award come from the meetings that I did you go to with Chris Everson in Montrose or something like that?
Yes. Yes, we had to travel over to Montrose to make this request and provide a presentation to a panel that represented multiple state agencies as well as appointments, I believe by the governor of other a local elected officials. So again, I feel really fortunate that they they believe in the project to award the maximum amount that they were permitted. And again, this is just Phase Zero. So there will be opportunities to go back on in some other funding venues for vertical construction. So this is from the state severance tax is how this is funded.
Well, my thanks to you and Chris Everson. Thank you. Great job. Board reports this evening?
Should I be Board of Health?
Sure, please.
Okay. I had Board of Health meeting last week. We briefly touched on Dr. Levin's column on gun violence. I'd like to remind everybody, if you have an unsecured gun, you can get a gun lock for free at the Picken County Sheriff's Office. We also talked about the fact that avian flu and COVID numbers are on the rise, and we get those statistics from the water treatment plant, not just ours, but from around the state. It was discussed that 1.78 million chickens got put down in Weld County because of avian flu. That's a lot of birds. We also had a presentation on from Community Health Services about affordable preventative health, which is dental, which is provided through schools throughout the state. It was very interesting. And lastly, we touched on air quality and the fact that in the 1980s, our PM 10 and PM 2.5 levels were so high that something had to be done, and it was mainly from wood smoke, dirt on streets because we used to sand our streets, and smoke from restaurant grills. It led to year-round street sweeping and additional filters for grills. And now our only, the only times we have a high air quality index numbers are when we have heavy wildfire smoke. Luckily, we're not there just yet. I had a Nordic Council meeting last week as well. Nordic Council is rebuilding its website to comply with the new Colorado State ADA requirements. Hard of hearing and 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 people with vision issues are will be able to access the new website. Also, the snowmaking proposal, we are hoping for an SE Group site visit at the end of July, so we'll have more about that. And then there was an auction meeting I attended last week too, but maybe you'd like to.
Yeah, there was an auction meeting on the 17th of July. A number of items came up. Public comment had some focus on fully occupying the number of bedrooms and categories for units for sale and that the Apsha staff brought up that if those that qualify for a particular unit in their category and in their bedroom count, if they decline to purchase, that it goes to fewer bedroom count in a different category. So that there was a complaint that somebody was able to buy a three-bedroom with two people and that they were out of category. And when the auction comes up and nobody that qualifies chooses to purchase it for any reason, that there's a there's a way for the guidelines to be lessened a little bit. We started the process for the five-year strategic plan, had a number of considerations, and also for next year's work plan. So that is going to be coming up for for Apsha for the coming year. And I think perhaps what was most impactful and meaningful, at least for me, was the discussion on the hearing officer. I had requested that we do that in executive session, and it was brought to my attention by the the attorney that the hearing officer is not an employee of of Apsha, of the city and not subject to executive session. The Apsha board had requested a meeting with the hearing officer, and I supported that. I think that Mick has done a lot for our community over a long period of time, and I thought we owed him the courtesy of meeting with him. And the rest of the board did not support that in that we do support working on what the expectations are of the hearing officer and also to issue an RFP to consider what our options are. What we're really looking for is arms-length somebody that isn't perceived as biased and that perhaps doesn't have the emotional attachments to the program that our hearing, current hearing officer has. So those are my high points. Maybe John has others to add.
I'd just add that I was excited about getting to the bottom of our annual work plan and the things that we want to work on first, which were affordability, the AMI evaluation, development neutral possibilities. And lastly, HOA relationships. All of those need work.
Thank you.
Yeah, at the end of the Rafta meeting that we both attended, just the four little highlights I picked up was a presentation on hydrogen-powered buses, hoping that technology falls, goes through and is ready by 2030, which would be pretty cool. Ridership still is not back to 2019, pre-pandemic levels. The we-cycle numbers has been incredibly successful. So looking to add more stations there. And then there was an executive session that was just pertaining to union contract negotiations.
Thank you. Let's move on our agenda to the consent calendar. The consent calendar this evening is Resolution Number 77, Park Avenue Construction Contract. Resolution Number 79, Burlington Associates and Community Development Contract. Resolution Number 82, Park Avenue Construction Owners Rep Contract. Resolution Number 85, Contract with Feathered Edge LLC for Building Envelope Improvements and Waterproofing Project. Resolution Number 87, 120 East Main Street, Aspen Historic Designation Request to Extend Negotiation Period and the Draft Minutes of July 7. We have a request to pull Resolution Number 77 for Park Avenue information. Are there any other items that council members wish for further discussion? Can we start with Resolution Number 77, please? Do you have available any project renderings that you can share?
I do have some visuals. I can certainly pull those up.
That'd be great.
While Carly's doing it, could the rest of you please introduce yourself for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Pete Rice. I'm the Director for Transportation and Parking. This is Carly McGowan. She's the Project Manager for Transportation now.
PJ Murray, Stormwater and Clean River Program Manager.
And Tyler Kristoff, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
And then I'd also like to introduce Trish Aragon, our city engineer, has been very involved in the project as well. Thank you, City Council. Introductions are out of the way now. I'm really grateful to be up here and bringing this project in front of you all. Like David and John's letter said, we've been really grateful to be engaging with them on this ongoing basis as well as many of the neighbors on Park Avenue in particular, on the 300 block of Park Avenue where this project is proposed. And we look forward to continuing to do so, to keep that engagement really, really close and frequent as we move forward. So taking a step back, just to go big picture, and you know, the background of this project and why we're talking about it in the first place. This project really is, there's two parts of it. At its heart, the stormwater project, the entire Smuggler Hunter drainage basin, all of that water. There's no infrastructure. It surface flows. As you can see here, it causes flooding. So this is a step towards mitigating many of those stormwater concerns in the neighborhood. And then it's also a public safety project. There's, we've been hearing concerns for over a decade on the safety of pedestrians in on Park Avenue and in this neighborhood in general. So I'm going to hang tight on this slide. I have plenty of visuals on deck if there's anything in particular from a past work session that you'd like me to pull up. My plan here is to walk through John and David's letter, item by item, unless there's a different request from council.
Could we hear council's questions rather than a full presentation? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so council members, the rendering that you see in front of you would be on the left side, that that would be 315 and 317, right there, right?
Correct.
Right. So you know where this is, right? This is just cresting up the hill if you're going in this direction. But that is the property that Bart was talking about and Mr. Prunskis was talking about, right there. This is a rendering of after. So the gardens that they are referring to are those gardens right there. There would be, do you do you have an estimate of how much from the roadway, where the roadway meets the driveway or the grass edge there? How do you have an idea how much into that property? And it's not into the owner property because it is still city right-of-way. But how many feet that direction does the road move over?
At the most, 5.5 feet. And I can pull up a visual for that as well that demonstrates it. I guess we're back to the beginning. You can see here, the edge of roadway, the the blue line is offset five and a half feet at the widest portion. So that that light blue line is the proposed new edge of roadway.
And what is the red line on that picture?
The red line is the property line of 315 and 317 Park Avenue.
Thank you. The questions that are that came up, one, with the fact that there is an existing sidewalk on some stretch of this road, why is it that we can't just fill in the segments that are missing on that side of the road without moving the road?
That's a great question. This roadway is very narrow. And so in addition to the road being very narrow, the property lines along all of Park Avenue, especially along the east side of Park Ave, so across the street from 315 and 317, those property lines are right up against the edge of roadway. And so there's no right-of-way to put in a sidewalk without removing roadway. And if we were to just remove asphalt for sidewalk, we're significantly under under width for the road.
And then another concern was about the drainage. There was a question about why there is no curbing on the downhill side of this sloped road. I think the drainage runs to the west side of the road. I don't know, but I think. And we had had some conversations about this, a drainage gully with a grate over it, that kind of stuff. Can you talk about, one, why no curbing on the west side? And two, do you, what are your plans to about any drainage that is flowing west off of the road surface?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple pieces here that are important. The first, like I mentioned earlier, is that there's no stormwater infrastructure in this neighborhood as a whole. And so it's important to know that the existing stormwater conditions are that the entire roadway is sloped towards the west, so towards this property, including everything upstream. And so the stormwater infrastructure and the way that we're installing this is based on the Smuggler Hunter Master Plan that captures that water upstream with a crown in the road and inlets. Like the letter stated, there's no curb and gutter proposed along the west side, and that's been based upon primarily direction in the past to maintain aesthetics in this neighborhood. In order to make the grading work to install curb and gutter, it becomes a massive grading project along this property frontage as well as the entire roadway and likely additional right-of-way easements needed or at the least temporary construction easements needed to kind of rework the entire entire length of the roadway because of the constricted right-of-way.
So this is not a simple roadway surface expansion. We're going to be, are you digging piping? You're putting in a drain, a stormwater drainage line with this construction?
So the stormwater main will go along the east side. So not, it'll be under the asphalt along the east side of the roadway.
So so then, no curb and gutter, what is the plan for any drainage on the west side? My first question is, is there is there an open channel or is there a great, what? Where we, how are we catching the water that's on the way?
So this is a little bit, we're getting into the the details of this a little bit. But what she's kind of referring to is currently all the water and the flow goes towards these houses. So what we're trying to do without disrupting the entire roadway and having to rebuild is what we're trying to do is divert some of those. And so you can see that by divert, by putting a crown in the road, it limits the disturbance and it also captures a lot of that flow that's been creating problems. This is the first step. And then we can capture that and get that out of the neighborhood. There is going to still be some flow from the west side of the road that is going to still flow on the properties as historic conditions dictated. But for the properties that you're alluding to, there is measures like trench drains that are going to capture some of that. So they are going to get less flow than they historically have had. And this is the balance of keeping the aesthetics of a neighborhood and also conveying and doing the right thing for drainage to start to help these neighborhoods.
Thank you. Since we've been talking about this project, it's been a little bit of a wrestling match. Council has, bless you, council has said several times about that light touch, about maintaining some character here and stuff. Do you do you feel confident that that what you're putting forth is addressing the concerns and the direction that council has asked for from you in in previous meetings?
We have listened closely to, this has been one that's been very public for many years. I would say that as far as outreach and communication with the neighbors, there's probably nothing as close to this that we've had. Trish, Carly, Mike and I have really put out a lot of effort to really reach out to this neighborhood, the Midland neighborhood. And this really keeps that balance of that aesthetic luck that everybody there is, but it really increases the safety. I mean, this is a big step in safety. And I think when you look back at this, people are going to be like, they're going to forget. It's going to be a sidewalk there, and they're going to forget like how difficult this was. But you're going to see a real increase in the way people feel and the way that they move between Smuggler Mountain and Hopkins. I think it's really important, you know, we've done a lot of work here, you've done a lot of work here, and you're going to see the changes, but it's going to be over the years. People are going to, they're not even going to realize that there was a problem here.
The existing sidewalks that are there now will still be there. Are they going to be maintained and added to, or do you have to tear those out?
Correct. So the existing sidewalks will stay in place, and the new portion of sidewalk will connect those two existing legs that are on either side of the block.
And is the new segments the same dimension, same width and stuff as the existing sidewalk that's there?
Because of the tight grading in this corridor and the narrowness of the right-of-way, there's some cases where it's lower, it's narrower than the standard five foot.
Thank you. That's all I got. Ward?
Yeah, I've been involved in this for many years, many public hearings and many renditions. And I know that initially, I think Tori and I were both in favor of one-ways on Park and Midland and that the studies came back and indicated that a one-way would increase the speeds. This is this is background just for public, for the public to be aware of. This is, this is background just for public, for the public to be aware of. We talked about separated walkways. We've talked about a lot of things over the years. But in reference to the letter that we all received, I have a couple of questions. What is your comment about lowering the, the roadway, grading the roadway instead of making a steeper driveway?
Yeah, I can answer it. And I'll also say, you know, this is something that we have, it, it's incredibly detailed civil engineering work when you get into the grading of, of a roadway like this. In particular, because in this image, it looks, you know, the three fifteen and three seventeen property line is very far offset from the road. But the, this is kind of an abnormality along this corridor. Most of the properties are very close to the roadway. And we are held to not change the grade at those properties. And so at the, at that property line. And so in order to hold the grade along the east side of the road, we're very limited about what we could do on, throughout the entire cross section of the roadway. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And it looks like the property line for three fifteen seventeen comes right up to that. And, and just for, again, for public knowledge, that all along Park Avenue, on either side, most every property has landscaped into the right of way. And this is, this is right of way that belongs to the, to the city. And they've, this landscaping has, has intruded into that right of way. And it's not subject to eminent domain. It's, it's our, our being the city's right of way. And I think that all the plans have done the best they can to minimize the impacts of those, those landscaping features that owners have put in, in the city right of way. I know that there was a request for a stop sign and that there was a study done. And the Warren Study indicated there was not a need for a stop sign at that location. I've, I go by there on the Hunter Creek bus all the time and in the summertime oftentimes. And just the smugglers side of three fifteen, three seventeen, there's some foliage that really limits the sightlines for people exiting on that driveway. Are those, is that sightline gonna be cleaned up so that people can actually see if somebody's backing out of the driveway?
Yes, with the realignment of the road, that corner becomes a little bit less sharp as well as the reconfigured landscaping. So we do anticipate that the sightlines would be improved there.
And one of the concerns was access to their property during all the construction phases. Have you resolved that with the, the homeowners there and to the, to everybody's satisfaction?
That one's gonna be, once this gets approved with the contractor, we have some time to figure that out. We did write it into the RFP that that has to be a heavy consideration on how we move people through that live there. We're gonna reroute general traffic around on Midland during this to give them more space. But the details of that are gonna have to be reliant on our discussions in the next couple months with the contractor. And then we'll go out, teach individual house owner probably, or, and have those discussions on like how this works for them. So that we have some time to work on that direct piece, but we understand, we got a lot of feedback on that as we were developing this project.
We've got a lot of feedback on a lot of aspects of this project.
That one was a heavy, a lot of comments on that one.
Yeah, and also the subject of snow melt and the city replacing the snow melt and the square footage of snow melt. What is the, and my question, one of my questions on snow melt is, did the owners of this property pay a rent mitigation fee for snow melt? I don't know if this was an active thing when this was constructed, but it was a question in my mind.
They did not. That is not part of this. It's an older system.
Okay, so that predated the rent fees for, and what is the current code for the amount of snow melt that is allowed? It's a hundred and one feet or what is it, hundred and four feet?
As far as, like the city code?
Well, what's allowed before mitigate, or before rent fees are required?
It's not that straight of calculation, I guess, that I'm gonna answer, that we can get back to you on it.
My point is, is that they're, they're requesting that the full parking space, which is halfway snow melted now, and the entire driveway be snow melted. And I thought that I read that you had limited the amount of snow melt to hundred and four square feet.
I can provide some clarification on that. The one hundred and four square feet is the amount of driveway that is within the right of way that will be removed by this project. Their driveway is currently snow melted. And so our plans propose reinstalling all of the snow melt, including what's in the right of way, other than, of course, that one hundred and four square feet that will be removed.
So a hundred and four square feet would cover the section of the parking spot that they're asking to be snow melted?
That's what the letter is requesting.
Okay. Also, there were, there was a number of mentions about the garden and the gardener and a request to meet with the gardener. And I saw in the, in the memo that you had met with a gardener, but is that for this property? And is, is that been resolved to everybody's satisfaction?
We've met with Diane, David's gardener, multiple times, including she reviewed the landscaping plans with us as we were developing them. I can't answer for whether it's been resolved from David's perspective.
It's a they are working with us. It's gonna be a communication. There is some challenges about what you can put back in place after you do construction. And so we've definitely done the due diligence. And I think David has been pretty happy with the discussions we've had. I think he's wanting to take more of a role than the gardener, the gardener we've met with in the past.
Okay. That's the extent of my questions on it. Thank you, Carley.
Bill, I'm gonna go to you. You have a hand up?
Thanks. Carley, is this property the most impacted property on the proposed project?
I think that's a fair statement. There's
Okay, thanks.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay. You mentioned that the grade on the east side of the road cannot be changed. Why so?
So the grade of the roadway itself can be changed. What can't be changed is the grading at the property line. So if someone's property corner is at, you know, X elevation, we can't come in and, and change that corner of the property by six inches.
I mean, Bill, when you look at a map
Why could the grade, why could the grade in the adjacent right of way not be changed?
So Bill, the real reason behind that
Using things like retaining walls.
I mean, if you look at the right of way line, it's really limited over by those buildings. And you'd really start impacting that entire side of the road if you start to, once you start lowering that grade on that, that grade is already at the level and you're looking at, you're looking at horizontally about four or five feet at the most. And some of them are even tighter. And so when you're trying to move a roadway, you know, down a foot, that has consequences on their parking, the trees and everything that's associated with their building foundations. And so this project actually, Bill, it's so tight that we're even putting in pilings to assure that we do not hinder any of those buildings over on the east side. So that's why we tend, the best decision was to kind of shift the roadway a little bit to the west.
Okay, so is it fair to say that you did study lowering the grade adjacent to the properties on the east side?
We studied approximately sixteen different designs of that roadway between Mike and I.
Okay, thanks. So one, one request and then one sort of bigger picture question on this. The request is, listen, given that, that this property is the most impacted, I request that the city continues, the city staff continues to interact very closely with these property owners. You know, continue to educate, continue to solicit their feedback, not make things difficult. You know, let's not even contemplate charging rent fees for replacement of snow melt that's already there. Let's not make them go through a whole bunch of paperwork. Let's make this easy on them. They're being heavily impacted here and making some sacrifices. I respect and appreciate and understand that, that these are changes within the right of way, not within their property lines. But it's still a major impact to their property. So let's make life easy for them. I'm not accusing you of not doing so, to be clear. I'm just saying from this point forward, let's, let's do everything we can to make it easy for these impacted property owners. And then, and then more holistically, someone reminded me that we had at one point as a council talked about traffic calming measures on Park Avenue. And it may have been in conjunction with, with this conversation about this project. I can't recall, forgive me. But wanted to sort of check in on that is, are we adding any traffic calming measures to Park Avenue as part of this project? And if not, why? My vague recollection is that council was supportive of, the majority of council was supportive of adding some traffic calming measures.
Yeah, so Bill, what this is gonna look like is this is gonna be traffic calming, as Trish would say, is you're trying to make drivers uncomfortable. And this roadway is being, it's not a roadway widening. It is gonna narrow the roadway a little bit. And between the different users, that speed is gonna be, and you gotta go back to our data, and I know that this is going back. We tech, we technically didn't have a speeding problem here. What we had is a problem where people were uncomfortable on the roadway sharing space. And, you know, the neighborhood looks at these vehicles going down the road and it feels fast. Technically, they weren't speeding. And so when you do this type of narrow roadway, they're gonna feel uncomfortable and that'll slow the speed down.
So again, I, I believe, and if someone recalls more clearly, that council specifically requested some traffic calming measures. So what, what happened there? If that's accurate. And again, I have a vague memory, if that's accurate.
Early in the process, sorry, Bill, I apologize. Early in the process, we did add the stop sign on Park in Hopkins. And the neighborhood is really ecstatic about that. That really was the biggest piece of traffic calming that we put in. And then when you add this other piece in, we're adding that. And I can tell you, one of the comments that you've heard a lot is the buses. And so that has been a continual program that Lynn and I have been working on to assure that the bus drivers are maintaining speeds. So Bill
And is that the new, the new speed limit?
Yeah.
That they're maintaining?
Yeah, it was always
Thanks.
Thank you. And Bill, just for clarification, there was a stop sign added in that, in the middle of this stretch over the last two years, I believe. So that, that was really the traffic calming measure that we thought most effective. And I, I think from my observations, it's been a really good success.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? John?
Yeah, I, there are no perfect solutions. It's gonna make everybody happy. But I'm looking forward to the increased safety, the better pedestrian connectivity. And not least of all, the first step in capturing some of the stormwater runoff from getting into the Roaring Fork River. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Sam, any additional?
Nothing additional.
Thank you very much.
Are we moved to adopt a consent calendar? A second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar this evening, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. The consent calendar passes with a five to zero vote. This brings us to first reading of ordinances. Our first one is for ordinance number ten, municipal code revision for leashes. Could I have a motion to read ordinance number ten?
Still moved. Second.
Motion and second. Could we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance number ten?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Ordinance ten, series of twenty twenty four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending chapter six point zero eight of the Aspen Municipal Code.
Thank you.
Information to be brought for the full presentation and public hearing at second reading.
And if I might introduce a few folks here. My name is Matt Kuhn. I'm the Parks and Open Space Director. I'm joined with John Spees here to my right. He's our Senior Open Space and Natural Resource Manager. And Simon Longacre is our Senior Park Ranger.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to give a brief overview of, of what's happening with this revision to the portion of the code. A couple of point, important notes. This was originally written in nineteen sixty-two and last updated in nineteen seventy-three. The current code requires the use of leashes anywhere within the city of Aspen. Changes proposed by the Parks Department aim to align the current use with, with the law. And so for the past ten to fifteen years, Parks Department has been using this little flyer here, enjoying Aspen with your dog as, as a way, as a guideline for dog owners who are trying to enjoy open space and parks within the city. While this guideline has been useful in the management of public spaces, it lacks some of the clarity that was necessary for appropriate enforcement by our rangers and law enforcement. So with this in mind, we proposed some of the following changes and, and these are the highlights. So first and foremost, we want to ensure, well, sorry, I should say, off-leash play will be allowed within city parks and open spaces under the following guidelines. Dogs' play does not interfere with public enjoyment or safety in a public space. Dogs' play does not enter wetland habitat, artificial turf, or areas in active use for an organized event. Dogs must be leashed on trails, sidewalks, streets, and within the pedestrian mall. Dogs must be leashed within Yellow Brick Park and the John Denver Sanctuary. And then dogs must be leashed in Heron Park after nine AM. You know, the intent of this is, is to add some clarity. And really, it's to, to, you know, really delineate where appropriate off-leash play is allowed. And, and, and in those conditions, obviously, we're counting on a diligent owner who is maintaining oversight of that animal or animals within those spaces. One other note, and Matt may have some additional things here, but I did want to provide some clarity on a specific part which one individual can own in, be under, or sorry, one individual can have direct control over no more than three dogs. And that would be leashed or off-leash.
Can, can I jump in?
Yep.
Gentlemen, I, I, I thought that the memo was very clear. I thought that this is a very thoughtful change. I personally don't have any questions. I, I don't need any more information. If other counselors don't, I would request to make a motion and, and move forward with this.
I think Sam has some, some questions.
I have questions, just comments.
Okay.
Well, it's just funny on the, you know, I try to represent the community. On a personal note, I bring my English Bulldog to Heron Park. And she does not handle the heat well, so she likes going in the water. So when I read that Heron Park, no off-leash play, I was thinking about myself, but then I was thinking about the observations I've made there and wondering why that park really needed the no off-leash play. I feel like there are dogs in the water all the time. Maybe you can tell me that's not supposed to happen. But I've always enjoyed the atmosphere there for being as playful as it is.
And that's good. Request for second reading?
Yeah.
Definition of wetlands. I'm sorry. Were you finished?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I could go on, but it's the same, so.
Well, I'm just curious, you know, wetlands, that doesn't include the Roaring Fork River coming through town and through Heron Park. Does it? Dogs can get into, into that. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'd consider that riparian.
Okay.
And my question will be, uh, how this is impacts Wagner Park. For a second reading, I just wanna have more clarity for that, for the community. Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Bill, go right ahead. With the motions.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance.
Ten.
Sorry, I lost my.
Ten.
Uh, number 10, series of 2024.
On first reading. A motion?
Second.
We've got a second by Ward. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number 10 on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Next one up is ordinance number 11. This is updates to the tree code to address wildfire mitigation. Uh, and I could take a motion to read.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 11, second.
Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number 11, reading?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
Ordinance number 11, series of 2024, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending chapter 13.20 of the Aspen Municipal Code.
Great. Uh, I'm still Matt Kuhn. I'm joined with John, but, uh, new up here is Shelley Grail Broaddus. I'd like to introduce her to you all for the first time. She recently joined our team, transitioning over from the U.S. Forest Service in the Valley, where she had a long career in recreation and winter sports. Uh, it's a huge win for us. We're really excited to have her join our team. That was a new position that was added in the 2024 budget. And really, that position is focused on bolstering our capacity to handle things like changes to the wild, to the forest municipal code for forestry, uh, as it pertains to wildfire, bolsters our ability to participate in the wildfire collaborative, um, as well as a whole bunch of other things that already are on her plate. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of, um, introduction there. And I do wanna kick this one off a little bit before I hand it off to John for a quick, uh, summary of this. This is ordinance 11. Within ordinance 11, there are two additional parts that I just wanna highlight. Uh, number one, there is a, uh, wildfire mitigation policy that is a separate document that's connected to this. And when and if you approve ordinance 11, you'll also be approving, uh, that policy. I wanna highlight that should we need to make changes to our policy at a later date, as we learn lessons and as this rolls out into the community, we would do that likely through resolution and try to keep the, the code intact. The second document that is in conjunction with this is an IGA with the Aspen Fire Protection District. And I wanted to recognize a really great partnership that we have right now with, uh, Aspen Fire. Uh, Rick Ballantyne and Ally Hager Hammond are behind us. Um, we've been meeting with them, gosh, off and on for over a year now on working through how to roll this out in the community in lockstep together. So really appreciate their partnership and collaboration. And we will be bringing an IGA that's related to this, uh, ordinance on second reading at the August 13th meeting. So with that, I'll hand it over to John.
Okay, um, broad overview here. Um, so the update to this code will provide homeowners and residents the opportunity to conduct wildfire mitigation uh, on their properties while complying with the city municipal code. Um, it's important to note that the current code does not have allowances for homeowners to remove vegetation for this purpose. Um, so Parks Department recognizes that this is an important allowance, um, to include within the code. It not only provides protection on individual properties, but for the larger community. Um, as Matt mentioned, we've been working with the Aspen Fire Protection District, uh, since 2023. Really working on a unified approach here. Um, and we recognize that this is sort of one component of a larger strategy in, in terms of wildfire mitigation. Um, specifically, our code, uh, will include lan- language that allows the removal of tree for wildfire mitigation reasons. Um, but the code relies heavily on this document, which is our wildfire mitigation policy. And wildfire mitigation policy is, is built on sort of two important resources. Number one, um, National Fire Protection Agency's Firewise USA Program. Um, this, this document outlines, uh, zonal ma- management for properties. And, and that really becomes the basis for, for how we are, uh, analyzing properties and removals within those properties. Um, second, uh, core to that is wildfire risk mapping. Um, so wildfire risk maps are, are third-party, um, foundational tools for us to understand what risk a property is facing um, in, 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 uh, you know, in its layout within the city of Aspen. So these two resources become the basis for our mitigation matrix. And that mitigation matrix, which is within the fire mitigation policy, it was also within the memo, um, you know, gives us the, the grounds and the guidance for what removals we'll allow. Really quickly touching on process, tree removal will largely follow the same process, but important to, um, mitigation, we, we will ask that they get a free home assessment from the Fire Protection District. And I think that what we like about that is that it, it closes the loop on what potential other, um, problems could be solved on the property related to the structure um, at the suggestion, uh, following the assessment done by the Fire Protection District. Um, fees for removal, uh, we, we, we do detail exactly how we're gonna go through and, and look at fees. Um, this will be different than the typical fees for removal. And that's, that's my brief summary.
I just wanna emphasize that as we've approached this, we've really taken a focus on adapting our urban forest, which is a very important resource for this community and has been for decades, and making it more resilient. And so as John lightly touched on here, the, the fees are adjusted to incentivize replanting of, uh, certain species that we've identified, um, through some resources at Colorado State University and with the City Forester that, um, are, are deemed and termed wildfire resilient or resistant. Uh, and, and that's where we wanna make sure we focus, is that we're allowing trees to be removed, but we really wanna incentivize and encourage as much vegetation and as many trees as possible to be replanted. I forgot to mention, our City Forester is also in the audience, David Kuhn, and he's played a, a big role in this as well. So with that, we'll field any questions and prepare for those for second reading.
Bill.
Thanks so much, um, to the whole team. Thank you for all your thoughtfulness and hard work on this. Uh, I may have been the first to, uh, request this, and, and I think it's really important for the future of our community. So, uh, a lot of gratitude for what you've done to date. I do have a few concerns, um, mostly surrounding fees. And, and it's when you, I, I think what's been proposed would, would work really well if every lot in the city of Aspen were a half an acre. But when you start getting down to tiny little smuggler trailer park lots or 3,000 square foot lots in the West End, um, the ability to replant on site becomes, um, extremely constrained and limited. So I, I'd request that we look at alternatives to the requirement to plant on site to offset those fees. Is there something else that could be done in lieu? Could, could you contribute to some kind of fund that's designed to plant trees in, uh, the right of way in an open space, for example? Um, i- is there some other way to help respect the urban forest that you mentioned, Matt? Which I do respect and appreciate and understand, but, um, I just wanna be realistic to the real conditions in a lot of the, um, specific properties in town. That's my biggest general concern with this. I do think it's a great step in the right direction, but wanna make sure that when we implement it, we're implementing it realistically and fairly and allowing people with the most constrained sites in particular, um, to be able to, to remove trees that are real wildfire risks to their structure and our community in general, without, um, penalizing them with mitigation fees that aren't really warranted. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Counsel, any other questions or information requests for second reading?
Yeah. Um, in response to Bill's comments and my own, I, I wanna be realistic as well, but I do wanna say, um, incentivizing to replant trees, I think should be a massive priority. I always talk about, um, especially when you're like walking up Smuggler and looking down at town, how it really looks like a forest. And like the only buildings you really can see are like the Wheeler, um, without like looking super carefully. So, um, making sure that trees are replacing trees is very important to me. And I think this community, especially as an arbor city, um, so e- especially in the same spots if they can, being realistic, as Bill said. But if you start losing too many trees in this, uh, urban area and you look down and you see way more buildings than you see the green canopy, I would think that'd be not as, uh, a success, um, comparatively. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
More trees, yes.
Okay, I could take a motion.
Make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance number 11 on first reading.
I'll second.
Motion is second for ordinance number 11. Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number 11 on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to public hearings on our agenda this evening. The first one is Resolution Number 76. This is a extension of vested rights for 1340 Snow Bunny Lane.
Torrey, am I good with video and participating in these?
Yeah, so far so good. Sir.
I tried to watch the, the C O P online and it was extremely choppy.
Do you know which, were you Facebook, were you?
I was, I followed, followed the link to just the broadcast.
You just, you just already have a problem, so if this stream was all gratuitous, that would be live, but the YouTube stream should be fine. If you check it on YouTube, I went up to the city of Aspen.
Yeah, no, I just, I just clicked on the link that was available on a Facebook thing and it was, it was unwatchable.
Yeah, it sounds like they're having an issue with it.
I went to the Zoom and the Zoom version was fine.
Okay.
But the broadcast was literally unwatchable.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Torrey and council members. For the record, I am Sophie Varga, Planner with Community Development. And we're going to start off with having the owner's representative, Chris Bendin, um, speak.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Chris Bendin with Bendin Adams here on behalf of John Reese. It goes by Jack Reese, so I tend to call him Jack. He corrects me every now and then. Um, Jack Reese owns 1340, 1340 Snow Bunny Lane. He's owned the property since 1973, some 50-plus years. Jack was a, um, grocer in town, uh, I think at the ABC, owned a liquor store, owned various other businesses and so on. Heavily involved in the board at the St. Mary's Church. Um, heavily involved at the Rotary Club of Aspen. He reminded me this morning while I was selling ducks out at the Ducky Derby tent. Sam, you saw me. Um, he was, um, one of the initial, um, creators of the Ducky Derby. The first year it was called the Ken Ducky Derby, uh, and then they ditched that because it was so silly. Um, he, uh, and his wife, Beverly, Beverly passed in 2021. They were married for 63 years. They had seven children, five are surviving, 10 grandchildren. Uh, Jack is 91 now, um, and, um, is living in his home. He wanted to come tonight, um, and, uh, he has a little matter that's going on that he's on antibiotics and it's sort of kicking his butt. So he's not here tonight. Apologize for that, but he did wanna be here. Jack, um, applied for a demolition permit and received one, um, from this year's issuance, um, in the beginning of two, beginning of this year, 2024. The purpose of that, obtaining a demolition permit, is he's not looking to demolish his house. He's looking to stay in his house throughout his life. Um, and, but the, the asset is the largest asset that he has to pass on to his family. The value of the property with or without a demolition permit is substantially different. Um, and as I've advised him and others, others have, and talking with other property owners, um, a property such as his that is perfectly fine for his use, but is not a property, not a home, not a structure that someone would keep. It really sees the difference in value with or without a demolition permit. Um, a new buyer would be redeveloping the property. That would be their interest. And without a demo permit, a buyer would look at it and pass right away. Or they'd be looking for a substantial discount. And that's when you sort of get into the vulture, blood in the water nature of, uh, the real estate industry that, um, we don't like to see. We recognize that it's there, but we don't like to see it. Um, Jack would also have some tax consequences and his family would have some tax consequences of, of trying to, um, sell the property now. Um, so we contemplated, we put together a demolition permit application for the 2023 allotment series. I talked with Jack right before, um, submitting as he requested, and he said, let's, let's wait. He understands that the demo permits are good for a three-year period, and he said, let's, let's wait. Um, part of the rationale there is that there would need to be a time for the estate to be settled and the family to come with the grips with the, the change, uh, listing the property. Uh, and then for a new owner to put together plans. That, um, would take a minimum, I would think, of one and a half to maybe even two years. So in reality, you know, getting a demo permit that's good for three years, you really need to start thinking hard about making a decision a year into that, a year and a half into that. So, uh, Jack decided, let's, let's delay. Let's apply in 2024. So I touched base with him again, beginning this year. He said, let's go ahead and apply. Interestingly enough, he received one of the four regular allotments that were available. He qualifies for the 35-year plus. We didn't need to go down that path because he got one of the initial four allotments. Um, it was our plan, if we were going to be applying for the 35-year, to also partner, uh, that request with this extension of vested rights. So Jack and I discussed, well, what time period should we be asking for? I suggested five years. We went down that path. I drafted the application again before submitting it, touched base with Jack. He said, let's, let's, um, let's ask for six. I said, Jack, what's going on? He said, I'm feeling really good. Um, one of the more awkward conversations, um, to have, you know, usually I deal with land use things that are, are not so, uh, personally related. So, um, and again, he, you know, as he relayed to me, his mom lived to 103, his grandmother lived to 98. He's 91 now. Um, and so he said, let's ask for more time. I called him back the next day and I said, Jack, let's ask for a period of time that is your natural life plus two years. That will put you in a position where you don't have to look over your shoulder. You don't have to have these awkward conversations with me or with your family about how you're feeling and what the asset, uh, is valued at. Whether you should be looking at selling and moving out, uh, right at the last few years of your life. Um, so that is sort of the, the basis and the rationale, um, uh, for the time period. Um, so with that, I can handle questions that you have. Again, apologize for Jack not being able to attend tonight at the appropriate time. I do have a few, um, letters and emails that were sent to me that I'd like to enter into the, the public record.
Thank you. Any staff information on this that you care to share at this time?
Yes, please. Sophie.
Yes, I have a brief presentation.
I got one quick question for Chris of just, uh, is this a duplex?
It, it is not. It is a single family.
Separated though, ownership wise, right?
It is separated ownership wise. Um, it's probably safe to share this with you now. Um, it is a single family. It's always been a single family. There was a pending code amendment in the seventies, maybe early eighties, that, uh, there was a concern that the city would either prohibit. that the city would either prohibit duplexes or prohibit condominiumization. And so Jack was advised, by the way, by the mayor at the time, to rush in and to submit a condo application. So he condoed the property. So it shows as two separate tax records. He had one side in his wife's name, one side in his name, but it is in fact a single-family house and always has been. There's no demising wall, there's only one kitchen.
Is his wife still alive? Is Beverly?
No, she passed in '21.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so as Chris laid out, tonight we're discussing requests to extend the vested rights for a demolition allotment from three years to a period of John Reese's life plus two years. So address is 1340 Snow Bunny Lane, developed with a single-family resident, residents. The applicant purchased it in 1973 and they applied for and received a demo allotment through the 2024 lottery. So some selected review criteria are on the screen. Full staff response is in attachment A in your packet. So the criteria on the screen can really be split into two categories. One is an analysis of the status of the approved proposal and the second is the impacts of extending the vesting. So just honing in on that first category, analysis of the status of the development order, to date, the applicant has made no progress pursuing the project, permit has not been submitted to demolish the structure. And moving into the second category regarding the impacts of extending the vesting. In staff's evaluation, maintaining the value of the applicant's property would be the sole benefit of extending the vesting and would be contrary to the established goals of the demolition allotment program. To date, the city has not received any benefit from the project approval. One of the goals of the demolition allotment system is to manage the pace of development and extending this based off of someone's lifetime is, is, goes against that goal, just due to the uncertainty. Another reason for adopting the demo allotment system was to reduce the negative impacts of development on neighbors such as noise and parking constraints. And again, just the uncertainty of having the vesting rely on somebody's life could lead to adverse impacts on the neighbors. So staff found that granting the requested extension is not keeping in either of those goals.
Just add a little bit of that conversation. You know, I think as, as this council has talked extensively about the demo allotment program, there's been a lot of discussion around demolition and construction waste. Certainly, we've had conversations about longtime locals and, and granting some additional space within the program for, for folks who fit that category. But I think often there's a missed part of the discussion, it was really important when this whole set of policies came into place at the, at the beginning, was the clear attachment of this to growth management. And while I certainly have a great deal of empathy for the situation that this property owner finds themselves in, the role of the demolition allotment program within the, the real estate market and, and those kinds of things. I do want to remind councils as we talk about this, that a really important part of the demolition allotment process was the expiration that has been built into the growth management quota system for a very long time, that those demolition allot, or that the growth management allotments expire with vesting. That was very intentional. It was to give, I think, clarity around when the community could expect to see growth, when projects would be carried forward. And I do understand the relationship of these review criteria to this kind of a project. Usually when we're talking about extension of vested rights, we're talking about larger projects, planned developments, developments in downtown, larger commercial projects, et cetera. And so I, I do recognize that there is some awkwardness around these review criteria related to the question that's in front of council this evening. But I do think that there is an intersection to consider in that very clearly in the growth management system, again, going back decades, there has been a desire to correct, to connect demolition allotments to a vesting period so that there is some predictability for the community, to understand when that development is going to take place. And secondly, you know, that this extension of vested rights, this criteria that's in front of you that I think staff applied to this request very clearly and could not make findings on, that this is, you know, these review criteria, which are in the Land use code, talking about any request for an extension of, of vested rights, are the review criteria that we have in the code and, and are in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Any immediate questions from council members? This is a public hearing, so we will open it up to the public here in just a minute. Okay, seeing none, and I don't see a hand from Bill at this time. This is a public hearing for resolution number 76, extension of vested rights, 1340 Snow Bunny Lane. Are there members of the public wish to comment this evening? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Yep.
I'm incredibly grateful to Mr. Reese and Mr. Bendon for coming forward with this request. This is an incredible demonstration of everything that is wrong with the demolition allotment program and that has caused me immense stress for the last two and a half years as I consider my mother, who is also just a bit younger than Mr. Reese, and how I'm going to manage her care, her living place, and her by far and away largest asset. I'm 65 years old, my time is coming too. And so for me, it is also a tremendous stress on how I am going to manage my asset, my, in my home that I am proud to live in. This is a demonstration that the demolition allotment program has the significant potential to strip away local-serving housing before its time and to actually accelerate development, not to delay development. You know, if, if Mr. Reese has not granted this, and indeed, all of us similar property owners do not have our, our rights as we expected to have them, the city of Aspen by this program is, is damaging the community, eliminating public service, serving housing, and accelerating development. There is nothing good about that. I encourage you to first and foremost, grant this request for vested rights. And I would say it's, you know, lifetime plus two would be a much shorter time period than I would like to have to manage my mother's asset. You know, you know, when, when I put her in the ground, to have to make this decision and secure this type of asset and act on it within two years, you know, I, I, I don't look forward to doing that. And, but secondly, you know, this is just a, a, an incredible example of why this demolition allotment program is, has more unintended consequences than good results, and it should be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Other members of the public to comment this evening on resolution number 76? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Council members, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a few letters I'd like to enter, if that's okay?
Do, have we already received them?
You have not.
Sure, let me see what you got.
Okay. Three of them total. First is from Susan Spalding. Ms. Spalding is the neighbor immediate to Mr. Reese. These came to me, so I'm, that's why I'm bringing them forward. She says, I wanted to write in support of Jack Reese's request to modify the vesting period for the approved demolition of his home at 1340 Snow Bunny Lane. I am one of the most impacted neighbors. As I own and live full-time at 1360 Snow Bunny Lane, my kitchen window looks over the roof of Jack's house. I hope that the city will approve the extension of the period of his life plus two years. He and my husband, the now deceased Mickey Spalding, were original owners of these homes, and I think Jack would be able to die in his home as Mickey did. Please let me know if you have any questions. Susan Spalding.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah.
I don't really want to set a precedent for folks to come in and represent other people's letters verbally like this. We would love to have those letters, we'd love to receive those. So if you can give them to us and give them to the city clerk, that'd be great. Thanks.
Second is from.
Oh, can you just pass that around so these guys have a chance to see what those are? And Bill, I'll let you know the names that are on them.
Second is from John Kelleher. John writes, I understand that Jack Reese has applied for and received one of the demolition permits related to his house as noted above. Jack's wife Beverly and two of his sons have preceded him in death. Jack's remaining children are Jeff, living in, on Lower Bullwinkle Lane in Aspen, and four daughters, one each living in Evergreen and Boulder, another living in Oregon, and the youngest living in Alaska. Inasmuch as the demolition permits are very difficult to obtain, it would be a great accommodation to Jack if he would be able to somehow retain that benefit for several years. Jack is currently 91, turning 92 in January, and has been a contributing member of the Aspen community for over 50 years. Has lived on Snow Bunny Lane for 40 years, his home was built in late 60s, so definitely a tear down, none of his children have an interest in moving into it. The consideration by the city is very much appreciated. That's from John Kelleher. Last to this.
Okay, so you misunderstood what I was saying. What I was saying is that I don't care for you to read each of the letters right now. We, I appreciate getting them. Bill, just so you know, the, the third letter is also in support of the demo permit extension and it is submitted by Stony Davis. And it is a very short letter, but even with that, I, I don't care to repeat it or read it. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Chris?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Council members, Bill, you got a hand up? Questions, comments?
Yeah, no questions. I am in support of the concept of an extension. Personally don't love the tying it to someone's life plus two years. I, I don't think this will be the last of these, that, these requests that we receive. So I, i- if we're going to grant them, I think that they should be equitable in terms of number of years. And so I would propose a five-year extension instead of this concept of someone's life plus two years. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I've got a quick question.
Yep.
Off Ben. I'm just trying to remember, it seems like there, anybody who's applied for a demo permit has eventually gotten one. Within a period of maybe 12 months they've had to wait, can you, do you concur with that?
I think that, you know, certainly over the, the course of this program since it was implemented, you know, we've, we've gone through some, some, I think, interesting discussions with council about how to handle what I think were more requests for these and were available year to year. And so we had, you know, more applications come in, we did sort of, you know, there were appeal processes, council granted an additional two, we carried forward two of the longtime locals from '23 into '24, so we had four available for this year. So I think there's been, kind of with those actions by council, I'm sure that there are some sitting out in the community that have not requested. But for the ones that have requested, to my understanding, all of them through either the allocation from one year to the next, or the appeal responses that council is engaged in, or the issuance of the longtime locals, that everybody who has applied for one to this point has been granted one, which to this point has been 30.
Thanks for that. That's, that's kind of what I recall too. I, I was part of the group that, that, you know, came up with this, with staff's help, obviously, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we carved out a space for long-term locals, set it at 35 years. And it's my recollection that those people that have been here 35 years that have applied for a demo permit have eventually gotten one. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Sam?
Yeah. I, I think the cruel irony of that, though, is the uncertainty and anxiety it creates to have to go through the process to get a demo permit again. It comes off to me as mean. I concur a lot with what Mr. Maple said, and I feel like this is the definition of unintended consequences and one of the main reasons why I'm vehemently against this program in the first place. I think on the flip side of like being able to grant this extension, whether it be two years or five, I'm open to five, but whatever the highest number is among council, I, I think it is just like a very nice thing to do to this family that's been here as long as they have, to give them the certainty and to grant them the peace that they will definitely want when Jack or John does pass at some point in time. So I, I definitely want to approve this, whether it be two or five, or as many years as anyone's willing to go for a third member. Thank you.
Thanks. Ward, any feelings, comments, suggestions?
Yeah. Pardon me. I have concerns with the precedent that was set at extending vested rights. I am fully appreciative of Chris and the, what you've brought forward here. I think that certainly they would, they would qualify for a 35-year exemption. I think we've granted one recently to a family whose father had passed two years ago. I think that there's a certainty that a demolition permit would be granted to this property regardless of when Mr. Reese passes. I, I support what the demolition permit, our demolition allotment program is trying to achieve. I know that we have a policy resolution coming up that we, we will review that whole allotment system. That's later in this evening in the packet. I, I'm sorry, Sam, I don't think it's, was ever meant to be mean. But, so I, I, I don't support granting an extension because I, I see that they already have another, well, the, the remainder of this vested rights until 20, July 18th, 2027, plus the certainty that they would get one because of living in the property over 35 years. So I, I don't want to set the precedent of extending vested rights.
Thanks, Ward. I, I think extension of vested rights in this case is the wrong way to go. For me, I disagree with kind of what's been said here. To me, this shows that not only are demolition permits being given out, but this person, it sounds like they actually had two opportunities. It just happened that they won on the first one. I agree with Ward. I think this council and other councils are showing that what we're trying to do is refine this demo program so that the actual permitting is not in question, but we are not there yet. We do have those code changes coming forward. You know, I, I really don't understand this. I, I wonder and question why this person and family applied for the demo permit at this time, and it sounds like it's because of maybe some of the talk that goes around of, of, of the fear. But again, I think this is evidence that this demo program is working and somebody got a demo permit and they don't even want it. So for me, I don't think an extension is necessary here whatsoever. I would almost love if, if you are certain that you're not using this, that you would abandon it and let somebody else perhaps that is interested in a demo permit, get their demo permit. You have the ability to hang on to this for a couple more years, you could ask for an extension at that time. You could definitely be in line for the, any code changes that we have coming forward that's going to really make this a program that focuses on the environmental impacts as well as the neighborhood impacts. But I, I, I don't, I don't think that this extension is, is necessary in this case. And I haven't seen anything that really points me in that direction. Again, I, Chris, I appreciate you sharing kind of that timeline of desire to apply for a permit, but I, I still don't understand why your client applied at the time that he did and, and now is asking for the extension. Maybe there's some other motive behind it.
He simply doesn't know when he's going to pass away.
You know-
He's trying to position the family in a way that they can make use of his asset at its greatest value. And I, and I say that as simply as I can. But he knows that if the, if he, as he says, continues to live fine, he's 90, he's going to turn 92 soon. And this permit expires, and I appreciate the word you've used, certainty, but they don't have certainty. There is no certainty around this, this program or obtaining a permit. It's quite a bit of effort and expense to arrive at this table for me to make this request on his behalf. They don't have that certainty. So they can't really do proper family planning in a way that doesn't make Jack anxious about when he needs to move out regardless of how he's doing health-wise. And, and that's why they're asking for this. I, I thought it was a pretty simple and straightforward request. It's not, you know, he, Jack has no interest in tearing down the house himself. That's why he hasn't taken action, because he's living in the house. But it is a, a factor, and a very important factor to the overall family planning. Otherwise, he will be faced with either needing to move out prior to when he wants to, the uncertainty of applying in the future of getting a permit or not getting a permit, or who knows what's going to happen with the program, or having the family needing to accept a significant, and by that I mean a 25 to 50% decline in the value of the asset if they don't secure this permit.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. That, I, it doesn't carry the day for me. I, I, I don't, I don't really, I don't really buy into that description. I, I don't, I don't agree. I just don't agree. Bill, you have a hand up.
Thanks. I, I thought of a question for Chris, if I might.
Yes, of course.
Chris, thank you. Chris, do you have an estimate of how much money Jack slash John has spent between obtaining the demolition allotment and making this appeal?
Yeah. Bill, I thought you might ask that question because I've, I've seen you ask that question of other applicants. I, I actually do think it is relevant in this review because part of your criteria deals with the effort on behalf of the applicant to secure and preserve an entitlement. I can tell you that the, in order to apply, you need to have current title, current survey, survey minimum $1,500. Lucky he has a sort of a flat square, so I think that's what we got the survey for. I think we beat up the surveyor a little bit on this price. There's some city fees and fees to put together the application. So I think to the time that Ben is pulling the numbers out of the little, whatever you call it, lottery system, it's probably $5,000. If you're facing-
Thank you.
-an appeal, if you're facing an appeal or pursuing a 35-year, it's anywhere from additional probably 2,000. Majority of that is city fee, probably 1,500 city fee, 500 private planner fee. If you're pursuing an, an appeal with a lawyer and so on, you could probably add another 3,000 to 5,000 to that.
Thanks very much.
Chris, I was just wondering, do you know if this home is energy efficient at all?
No. I, I mean, it's, it's, houses built in this time period, late 60s through the 70s, probably through mid 80s or so, are so at the lowest point of construction quality. So it's, from a energy efficiency standpoint, it's sort of a piece of garbage.
Yeah. Leading on that one. Yeah, I figured it would be, and it's another reason why I think this program is counterintuitive to our goals of climate effectiveness, so.
I don't understand. They're asking to not tear it down. You, you're saying this is an energy inefficient house and that it should be eligible for demolition?
Yeah.
Understood. It, it not only is eligible for demolition, it got a demo permit. The motivation here is, has nothing to do with the environmental envelope of, of the house, and they're asking for an extension not to move to demolition. So I, 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 we're all in the same boat on that. We're all on the same page. We want to get more efficient housing. We are trying to get a demolition permit program that focuses on landfill reuse and, and things like that. So I, I appreciate your comment, but I just don't know, in this situation, they're not looking to make environmental improvements to this house.
Eventually, they will. Or eventually, they won't because they won't have a permit anymore and they'll pass away, and then maybe they won't get another one because maybe-
There's no maybe they won't get another one. That's not where this program's going. That's not where its council has shown itself. That's not where future councils will show-
It's possible, though. With the lottery system, you could not get a permit.
I, I, I just disagree, and I think that this is why this person has found himself in this situation, is because it's possible that people have been telling this person that that's the situation, creating an unnecessary fear. That's probably why this person is in this situation. What, what I'm saying is that the way this program is going for refinement, we're going to be seeing those refinements. It is only moving towards a program that both you and other council members say that they support. So, you know, again, no argument at the table. I just wanted to say, if it comes to the environmental upgrading of the property, that is not what, what is at question here.
That's fine. Uncertainty, I would say, is a necessary feel, fear, though. Family planning is very important to people with their largest asset especially.
Absolutely.
If anyone wants to make a motion, so we can move on, that'd be-
Thank you. Yeah. We can take a motion.
I move that we deny extension of the vested rights for the demolition permit in Resolution 76 series.
I'll second.
Okay, once again, to be clear, the motion is for denial of Resolution Number 76. So voting in the affirmative would be for the denial. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution Number 76?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
No.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
No.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. The motion for denial of Resolution Number 76 passes by a vote of three to two.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Our next public hearing tonight is Resolution Number 80. This is the policy resolution for Title 26 amendments.
Good afternoon, evening. Haley Hart, Long Range Planner. To my left, Ben Anderson, Community Development Director. I do have a slide deck I would love to share, if that is okay with you all.
Please.
Okay. So we are here to initiate the step of a policy resolution to open the land use code for edits. In addition to Ben and myself, I also wanted to introduce our planning intern, Tilly Pines, who's sitting right here in the audience. And this is her second summer with the community development staff, and she's been instrumental in getting us to this point of bringing a policy resolution to council tonight. So for the general procedure, for an amendment to the land use code, it requires a policy resolution approval in front of council. Tonight, we are asking council to approve opening the code for edits to Title 26. Again, this is not a presentation to discuss the policy for each at this moment, as we are presenting five different sections within Title 26. Rather, it is just a presentation to look at opening Title 26 for those amendments. So Policy Resolution Number 80, Series of 2024. Again, this is five sections within Title 26. Typically, we come and just do one policy resolution for one project, but we were able to get counsel from the legal staff, and they advised us being able to bundle it together tonight. So just wanted to clarify that before we kind of go through it all, because typically y'all see it just as one item for one sort of, you know, edit or amendment to Title 26. So three of the five amendments have been introduced to council in the past two years. These include the Certificates of Affordable Housing Credits Program, demolition allotments, and a response to House Bill 231255 from last summer. The remaining two are fees. So this is our planning and zoning fees that is currently in Title 26, and trash enclosure, enclosures, which is within our calculations and measurements section. And these two sections, which you have not seen, are just intended to better align existing code with other sections of the municipal code. So we'll sort of dig into those a little bit. But these five amendments are important aspect to community development, sort of long-range planning work over the next six to eight months. And again, which is kind of why we're just bundling them, so you can sort of see what is going to be in front of you in the coming months. So the first of the five amendments relates to planning and zoning, application and review fees. Currently, it's six, within Section 100 of Title 26. All of the other fees associated with permitting and review process, so this is for building permits, this is for land use processes, are in Chapter, Chapter 2, which is called miscellaneous fee schedule. So this amendment would merely take these two sections out of Title 26 and put them into Chapter 2 to create consistency and alignment within all the fees. So pretty straightforward for that one. And to the right is just an image of, you know, what those look like in Title 26 right now. Nothing would change. The second of the five proposals are for the Certificates of Affordable Housing Credits Program. And the goal of these amendments would be to bring additional flexibility, opportunities, and incentives within the existing credits program. And the topics on this slide represent possible outcomes that have been discussed by staff and council to date. So just some examples here, and these, this was all in the memo. You know, allowing category five in R O units to be eligible for credits, as well expanding, you know, deed restricted development within the full extent of the urban growth boundary to also be eligible for credits. These are just two ideas that, you know, we've sort of discussed at this table in the past that would allow for further flexibility. Again, this is probably not the time to really dig into the policy of this and, you know, figure out what we want to do. Rather, we're opening the code and, you know, we'll be looking for your direction on how to proceed with these amendments. All right, Ben's going to talk about the demolition allotment program.
I, I think it's also important to say for, for all of these, on top of the requirement of the policy resolution, once a policy resolution is, is passed for, for this purposes of kind of initiating, opening up the land use code, for each of these, some more than others certainly have a requirement for public engagement, public outreach, getting feedback from the public. Certainly, I think the, the, the conversation about the credits program that Haley just discussed, and certainly on the demolition allotments, as we, working with council, start to coalesce around what exactly is going to show up in an ordinance, and even sort of gathering ideas for what's going to show up in those ordinances, certainly there'll be public engagement efforts that are required by the land use code. On the demolition allotments, obviously, you know, we just had a conversation a couple minutes ago. When we've had this conversation over the last several months with council, you know, obviously, I think across the five of you, there's differences of opinion and areas of emphasis that have come to fore in the discussions, ranging from very targeted changes around the number of allotments, all the way down to perspectives that would like to see the program eliminated in its entirety. And in between, I think there have been discussion points about additional performance standards, more flexibility, more discussion, more clarity of process for the longtime locals, trying to think about how the lottery system works and, and what might make that more effective moving forward. And so I think, you know, staff has taken all of those comments from, from, from council members to heart. Certainly, I think there's a, a range of responses that we could pursue in, in light of those, those comments and desires for some modifications of the program. One of the things I would sort of ask, and on, on these other ones, I think we, we've got some pretty clear understanding of, of the process that we need to engage in on this. But just because I think of the nature of discussion on this topic, I would ask if council desires a standalone work session on this topic, or based on previous discussions that we have had, coming to council eventually at a first reading with a, a set of options that you might be able to choose from in a, in a possible ordinance. Either one of those, those paths, I think, are acceptable and, and certainly encouraged by staff. But I do think, just in terms of scheduling a future work session with council, we'd be happy to, to hold a standalone work session. But it would also, just because we've had such extensive discussion, and I think we have a clear understanding of some of the desired changes that, that council has, has discussed, we could also come straight to a first reading eventually with some of those changes after having a, a more extensive conversation with the community on this. So, but this is of the five topics, one that perhaps we would ask for some traction about, so that we have clarity where council would like us to go with this in terms of process.
If you want that right now, I think it's, it's going to be a needed work session. I, I think I'm happy to kind of go to first reading ordinance, but I, as you said, I think that we have five maybe different takes, and I think that the list of items that you have there for possible amendments to demo program are such a range that a work session would be most helpful, I think.
My, my opinion is that I'd like to go to first reading, and I think we've, that accelerates the process of relooking or reanalyzing this, to perhaps give relief to some people in the community. And I think a work session delays that process. So I would support first reading, because we will have a lot of, you've already listed options. That's my preference.
You, you can share what you think if you like.
I, I'd rather just go to first reading as well. I'm pessimistic, though. Work session would be beneficial.
I'll go along with the first reading as well.
Uh, that's three. Bill, do you want to chime in?
Me as well.
Okay.
Yes, please. I, I also would support going to first reading. This program is a farce, and I'm tired of spending time on it. I, I don't need to spend another work session talking about it. The likelihood of someone getting elected in March that's going to get rid of this program alongside myself is pretty high. What happened tonight was just punishing a longtime local. So we're digging the grave further, and this program is going to be short-lived. Thanks.
Understood. Okay. We will bring that to first reading.
I think you guys are up for a disappointment. You're going to see a meeting continued. I think you've got a lot of work to do on these topics, and it's multiple topics. But that's quite all right.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to move on to the next item?
Sure.
And so the fourth of the fifth, five proposed amendments is related to the city's response to last year's House Bill 1255. And as you may all recall, you all voted on Ordinance 11, Series of 2023, which passed a temporary nonrenewable anti-growth law. So it basically just extended the land use code for two years to sort of freeze it in time as we go through the different chapters to bring it into compliance. So staff at this time has done a thorough sort of review of GMQS, and we are- And we are now moving on to the other interrelated sections of Title 26 for red lines. After that point, we will bring it to legal and planning council. And so, I anticipate being able to bring a response to the House bill in the coming months. That just brings our code into compliance with the House bill. Okay. And the final of the amendments that are proposed tonight are for our trash enclosures sections within calculation and measurements. So, we have been coordinating in community development within the team with environmental health's Chapter twelve, which gives the information for where you can put a trash enclosure, where, the size of it, how it needs to be wildlife-proof. And then, Title 26 talks a little bit more about like the location, the dimensions, floor area setbacks. And right now, those titles are in conflict. And they're also in conflict with engineering's Title twenty-nine for the right of way. So, right now, staff is coordinating within the department, along with engineering, to figure out a better solution to create an easier path for wildlife-resistant containers that work on the property for both residential and the commercial core and our lodges. So, this, the intent of this is just to bring better alignment and sort of greater ease to that building permit process for enclosures, while thinking sort of holistically about the space, the floor area, and the location of that. And of course, you know, protecting wildlife. So, we find that to be instrumental as well in this amendment.
Question for you. It says space allotment for trash and recycling. I mean, does that limit it to trash and recycling? Is compost included in that, et cetera?
Yes, Ainsley is, I'm working directly with Ainsley, and we're working with engineering as well. And compost is certainly part of that conversation.
Okay. And I say that not just in support of compost, but, you know, the city, I think, for decades just has not really done a kind of a comprehensive view of this. You can look at the way that interior spaces are allocated. You can look at the way that exterior spaces are allocated. We do a very poor job of designing for our waste needs.
We don't disagree, and I think that Ainsley finds it a very difficult process in the building permit process. And something that we also are looking at are what are the triggers to bring that into compliance? Because right now, it's a little loose, a little unsure. And so, we're also looking at what these new triggers would be for Title twelve.
I would just add, you know, I think folks that are trying to do the right thing, there are things happening in our code that currently make it difficult for them to do the right thing. And one of the things that we're hoping to achieve is smoothing that path to make sure that some of those obstacles sort of go away in pursuit of, I think, better aesthetics, better functioning trash systems. But most importantly, making sure that we've got good facilities for protecting our wildlife friends.
Okay. I know that was a lot. Again, these are five amendments. I think staff is clear on sort of path forward for each of these. So, staff does recommend council approve Resolution number eighty. Again, this is a policy resolution opening up Title 26. Any other questions?
Do you have an immediate question?
No questions.
This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for Resolution number eighty, policy resolution for Title 26 amendments. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak on Resolution number eighty?
You didn't ask my name last time around.
I'm still Mike Maple.
Twelve fifty Mountain View Drive.
I'm stunned. I'm stunned that members of this city council think that people's feelings and perceptions of markets are evil thoughts that are put into their mind by others. That's not the case. I don't think you understand Economics one oh one. What if I said to you that the money in your bank account, its value is not a dollar, but rather it's subject to a lottery? Roll the dice. It might be worth twenty-five cents on the dollar. It might be worth fifty cents on the dollar. Or it might be worth a hundred and twenty-five cents on the dollar. I think that would cause you some stress. Tremendous uncertainty is created by the demolition allotment program.
So, Mike, you're supporting Resolution eighty?
I'm making a public comment, Ward. Thank you.
I know.
I have to leave.
I know. Thanks, Ward.
Thanks, Ward.
The, as you know, I have attended probably close to every hearing on the demolition allotment program. I have repeatedly heard the mayor say that if the demolition, the recovery of resources was heightened to the bolder standard that he would be prepared to consider, seriously consider, would amend or eliminate the program. Despite the mayor making those comments repeatedly, it is not included in the resolution of items to be considered by staff. I would suggest that you do that in hopes that perhaps the mayor could get on board with eliminating this incredibly damaging program. It is clear to me that the pain of this program and the time period with which these resolutions will come forward, or these new ordinance will come forward, remains long, and the stress that I feel as a property owner will continue. That's not good for me. It's not good for my quality of life. It's not good for my wife. It's not good for my family. It's very painful. So, I would also ask that you push staff to bring this forward in a timely manner. I heard this recommendation from the city council to bring these resolutions or a resolution like this forward in November. It's now July. Based on what I'm seeing, this uncertainty and any new ideas are going, are months and months and months, if not years away. So, while I support the idea of opening up the demolition allotment program as part of this resolution, it is woefully incomplete in terms of the items that are considered. Another item that should be considered is an evaluation of the program. That's not, that's not part of staff's, staff report or recommendation to make a intentional and well-considered analysis of this, what this program has done and what it has not done. It has damaged our community, and it will continue to damage our community as long as it is in place. And if you're blind to that, you are blind. Thank you.
There was quite a list there under the demolition permit, everything from eliminating to doing the greater
Waste diversion.
Waste diversion. I think he just referenced that they weren't in there, but I think they are in there.
The waste diversion program is being considered for application sort of across our building permits. And certainly, we've got plans to be in front of you in the second half of twenty-four with a proposal for updates to the construction and demolition requirements across building permit program.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thanks. Supportive of moving forward with this policy resolution, a couple of bullet points that I would request to be added here. This one under certificates of affordable housing credits. And that's the concept of how do we further incentivize the private market to develop affordable housing and therefore earn credits. And an idea that I've shared with Steph, but not with you gentlemen, is increasing the generation rate of those credits when developing housing, whether that be based on certain thresholds or qualifiers, or just flat-out increasing the rate across all newly developed affordable housing by the private sector. I think it could really change the math on private sector development, and I think it should be considered. I posed that question to the three of you, just can we include that in this list? And happy to answer any questions or provide more detail if that's not clear.
The suggestion is to give more credit per unit, basically. So, a one-bedroom, which currently now is one-point-seven-five F T E mitigation, would be upped to two-point-five or something like that, Bill. Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, whether we do it based on unit, based on F T E, you know, the mechanics could work a couple of different ways that I'm sure.
I'm always
That is contemplating in his head at the very moment. But I do think it's something worth looking at. Like clearly, the math isn't working today very well, right? If it was, there'd be more private sector affordable housing being developed as we speak. So, what can we do, given that we are essentially the mint of these credits? What can we do to change the math in favor of the private sector doing this versus putting all of the burden on the city of Aspen, which has proven not to be a very good developer of this type of housing?
I'm always open to conversation. That sounds to me like digging a hole deeper. If you're giving away more credits for the same units, then you're not actually, you know, making gains in that way. Obviously, Bill is talking from the standpoint of getting more housing developed. But, you know, again, I'll entertain any conversation and get more information. But to me, that does not sound like, or at least the scenario that I just described doesn't sound like the method to get there. If Comdev has something else that goes along the lines of what he's requesting, then I'm always happy to have a conversation. Sam?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. The one question comment I have is, does this potentially lead towards streamlining the fee and lieu process that we've had discussions about?
The updates to the fee and lieu, to the fee and lieu requests?
Yeah, could, if it's not added, could we add that? I was talking about, we've had fee and lieu discussions here where that was the only option, and it felt kind of silly to have a discussion when there's only one option. So, if that could be streamlined, I thought that would be a nice thing to add to this.
We have growth management sort of open. We were not sort of immediately contemplating that. We've spoken with the city attorney's office on this. And I think other than, you know, a fairly significant code change that, again, has potential impacts to, one of the really important underpinnings to the affordable housing credits program is the need to request fee and lieu from city council. With a little bit of process associated with it is a discouragement that you've gone to sort of full effort to find those things, to find credits on the marketplace before coming to council. So, you know, we can certainly do this. It's not part of this request. Just because I think it, but in relationship to the H credits program, we can probably do some analysis on that air.
Okay.
We've got the two sections of code open. This would add a sort of additional policy question that we might want to add to the resolution, if that's a desire from the majority of council. Right now, it's not one of the things that we've lined out as a reason for opening the code. So, we'd probably want to add that to the resolution prior to being signed, if that's a desire from the majority of council.
And I guess I would ask the other council members to at least look into that. It's not the biggest deal in the world, but I think it'd be nice.
I'm supportive of that, but I also, I didn't hear from Sam or John on my request on incentivizing the generation rate, or increasing the generation rate.
My answer to that is I'm open to it more, since this is just a
Would you like me to talk about that topic, or would you like me to talk about the fee and lieu further or not say anything?
I would like to finish with Bill's request for council support to bring forward information around raising credits or making the credit program more viable economically, I guess is the general way to say it. And I'm always open to information, so yes.
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 I would support it.
So, we're interested in this conversation. We've wanted to see how to make the credit program more effective. So, if that's one way, we want Comdev's input.
I think that the policy resolution as stated allows us to contemplate that kind of that kind of, that kind of response.
Great. Sam, your next request was?
Them opening up something to streamline the fee and lieu process.
So, this is for coming to council if you need more than point one F T Es for your affordable housing mitigation. Are you anticipating this to be streamlined as in like creating a larger amount that is allowed under fee and lieu? Or is it streamlined as in like it's on consent calendar?
I mean, I would even say it could be done administratively if there is only one option. Whatever it looks like, I don't know. But I'm just saying, you've come to us with a fee and lieu where if you deny it, there is no other option. So, why even ask the question, sort of thing?
Yeah.
It's not the biggest deal in the world. I want you to know.
No, but I, but I think, I think for all of our benefit, you know, I think it's going to be a bit before some projects come to market. We've got some projects in the pipeline right now, but it's going to be a bit. So, there's going to be more requests coming your way. And again, you know, the two sections of code that we would need to touch to do that, the affordable housing credits program and the growth management quota system chapter, both of those we're going to have open. It's just that we did not describe that outcome as one of the things that council was pursuing. So, if that's a desire to add that, we certainly can. But I think it would require kind of a majority desire to add that to the policy resolution.
I'm supportive.
We just went through this fee and lieu recently, and we had this discussion.
We made updates to the fee and lieu, yes, to the amount.
But not to the process for requesting counsel in this time of shortage.
I'm not opposed to the way it works right now. I mean, they only come up every once in a while.
Yeah, let's leave it off this plate for now. We just went through that fee and lieu. Let's, we'll have more discussion. If we need to bring it back, we'll bring it back. There's a lot already in this.
It sounds like there's too supportive and too not.
Yeah.
How do we resolve?
So, at this time, let's just not add to this list of items.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eighty, series of twenty twenty-four.
I had one more thing. I mentioned I had two things on this. Thank you. And Mike Maple touched on this in his comments. But I do think that one of the potential outcomes under GMQS demolition allotments, if Tori is going to stand true to his words, should be to increase the diversion rates and therefore eliminate the program, not just eliminate the program for no reason. So, I think that's one of the, I'd like to be clear with staff that that's one of the potential outcomes and how we get to that outcome.
I think that's kind of already what they were targeting, so yeah, that's in there. They have the flexibility to discuss the diversion rates in essence of program revamp. Good. Any others? Public comment was closed on this. You have information that you need from us? Okay. John, if you'd like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution eighty.
Seconded.
Motion is seconded. Further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution number eighty, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Tori.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike, thank you for being here and your input. I appreciate it. It's all right. I only tell you the truth. Uh, resolution number eighty four, action items, resolution number eighty four waiver of attorney client privilege.
Mister Mayor, this is, um, an item brought to you by the city attorney's office. Um, I believe my memo was fairly thorough in stating the position that we're seeking. The city attorney's office provided, uh, an opinion. Um, at the request of city council regarding the status of votes in the use of city open space for the preferred alternatives. Set forth in nineteen ninety eight record of decision, we provided a written opinion to council. And there was a request to consider waiving the attorney client privilege associated with that memo. And this, my, um, my memo, um, that's in the packet today. And the resolution would allow the waiver by city council of this attorney client privilege. I do want to make a note about the, um, two aspects of this. Um, and it's set forth in the resolution. Um, first is that the the waiver of the attorney client privilege, which is within the discretion of city council. Is in this case limited to the specific confidential memo that was dated July ninth, twenty twenty four. And prepared by the city attorney to address that question regarding the necessity of a vote to move forward with the record of decision. It is for and does not waive any other attorney client privilege. Whatsoever, whether it was the discussion, um, of city attorney regarding the memo itself. Or any other privilege. It is only regarding this specific confidential memo. I also wrote, uh, had in the resolution that the memorandum. Um, the confidential memorandum will be posted on the website upon the execution of this resolution by the mayor. Um, I wanted to make certain that we were getting it to everybody at an equal time. And that it would be done through, uh, presentation on the, on the city's website following the execution of the resolution by the mayor. Everybody will have equal access to it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sam.
Uh, just got one question of, um, do we send memos to the press? And can we send this to the press to make sure they are explicitly aware of this? Something I can request counsel.
I hope they are aware of it.
You could direct me to, however, I believe they're very aware of this. Castle Creek Bridge website, um, for when we post it. We have weekly conversations with all of our media coverage at their request. And so this is on the list to let them know if you approve this tonight, that they should be on the lookout for it already.
That's really what I wanted to hear. Thank you. All good. I'm ready for a motion if anyone else has anything.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eighty four.
Seconded.
Motion is seconded. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for resolution eighty four, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Guth.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Mayor Tori.
Yes. Resolution eighty four passes for nothing. Next item on our action items is council discussion on visitor centers.
Uh, Mister Mayor, just regarding the last item that was just passed, just to help manage community expectations. It'll probably be about forty eight hours, um, in time for that resolution to be finalized and printed and executed. And then posted, uh, the memorandum, just to let everybody know you're not going to find it tonight.
Thank you. Council discussion on visitor centers.
This is an opportunity for a council discussion regarding the location and use of visitor centers in the community. You were provided a memo yesterday that provides, uh, overview of the current, uh, visitor. Um, attendance at each of those visitor centers, as well as an opportunity for you to write any direction to me. About whether I should be looking outside of the city's current real estate holdings for providing visitor centers. Or if you wish to give me direction to include space for a visitor center inside any particular real estate holding. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so current status on visitor centers. Um, and Sarah, could you just, uh, for the public and for council members? Um, talk about the visitor centers as being something that is paid for, space supplied for. Et cetera, um, by city or, uh, destination marketing or ACRE. What is the current relationship between the city and visitor centers?
Uh, common in most mountain towns, the municipalities provide the visitor centers on behalf of their local economic activity. And that's no different here in Aspen, that the city is the one who has viewed this as a core service for many decades. Uh, and therefore has provided physical space as well as financial resources to deliver those services in the community. Um, for many, many years, that was funded from the city's general fund. Uh, in twenty twenty three, that switched to the destination marketing funds that are collected through the lodging sales tax. Uh, those funds, uh, you have a recap in your memo of how they have grown since around. I think we only went back as far as twenty twelve, um, in the memo. But as you can see, that there's been ample resources to provide this service, uh, within those revenue sources. The city has the option to choose any vendor for this service. Um, back in twenty twenty two, I was directed to not seek an R F P process. But rather to work with our existing vendor for an extension. Uh, council authorized a five year extension of those services. And for starting January first of twenty twenty three. And in that, um, we made commitments as a municipality for ensuring, uh, certain types of visitor center. Services are available in the community, uh, in exchange for, um, providing the spaces. And, um, authorizing the use of lodging tax dollars for this purpose.
Thank you. Uh, to start this discussion, current situation, we have, uh. Five visitor centers currently?
No, there.
Counting the airport.
There's four, three, which are, uh, within the purview of city council.
The current powerhouse doesn't count?
You have the powerhouse, you have the guest pavilion, and you have the Wheeler right now.
And the airport is four?
Right.
Sorry, I was counting.
Airport is outside the purview of the city's lodging tax dollars.
Sorry, I was counting a chicken before it hatched. Um, so, uh, I'll start off the conversation on visitor centers. Um, I, and this relates to resolution eighty three, which is coming up next. Um, I think that a visitor's center inside, uh, of, uh, renovated armory. Um, at least as of now, before we get to our next, uh, community outreach, et cetera. I think a visitor's center in the, uh, next iteration of the armory. Uh, that includes the temporary, uh, possible location of visitor center to the armory. As well as, uh, ongoing location at the armory is a good idea. Um, I have felt that the current information booth, that is the kiosk out on the mall across from Paradise Bakery. Um, had really seen its lifespan. Uh, we had heard of a proposal by ACRE or the Destination Marketing Team. For the possibility of a, an airstream that is movable. Um, I, uh, personally have thought that that was a good idea and a good move to move away from the existing kiosk. Which I really think has seen its, its, uh, its day. Um, but there hasn't been a, uh, support from others. I don't think, uh, other council members may have a, a, a visual on what that modified airstream would look like. And how people would interact with it. Um, but with with that, um, information not available, I I have not heard other council members necessarily supporting that. Uh, moving forward, I I find that the Wheeler Opera House, um, may be the least, uh, visited of the visitor's centers. So as we move into the future, I I I can see us having a main visitor's center location at the armory. Um, and if there was a need for a second, or if we are obligated for a second. I can see that being at the current information booth. Although I see a little redundancy, um, if we had a full. Visitor center facility at the armory, I think that's a little redundant, so I'd be open to future conversations. Ultimately, my support is for a visitor's center space, uh, in the armory. Yes, Sam.
Yeah, thank you, Tori. Um, I'll make mine short as far as, uh, I'm hoping there's a visitor's center either in the armory. Or adjacent to the armory. If you need direction, Sarah, for that, um, spot next to it. I don't know if we're calling it the side shed, but, um, that might be a good spot for a visitor's center, uh, to solve our problems.
John.
Uh, I also think there should be a permanent ACRE home in the armory, uh, just at least a visitor center.
Thank you. Bill, input here?
Yes, uh, I'm fine with a small visitor's center at the armory. Uh, um, explicitly not their offices. I don't think that we should be in the business of housing ACRE's office needs. I also wanted to mention that I was quite surprised by the very low visitor numbers at the North Mill Old Powerhouse over the last several years. So that that clearly, um, isn't working well for that purpose. And I think we should keep that in mind. And I actually like the kiosk across from Paradise. I think that between that and the future armory location will probably well served. For that purpose for our visitors. And I I I mentioned that specifically because I think we should evaluate the Wheeler kiosk. As part of this conversation as well. I'm not sure how necessary that that one is. But I do like the mall location and I would be okay with a small footprint use at the future armory. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm interested in hearing some input, if the team that's in front of me has any, um, regarding that. But I'm really also curious, Sarah, what further direction do you need from just that council discussion?
Uh, at this point, I would recommend that if the council wants to go forward with the armory. I think there's some different perceptions of what small is amongst the council. And so we need to be realistic that, um, if this is the permanent year around visitor center location. That it does need to be able to function well, and that includes the U S Forest Service in that space. Um, and therefore, uh, that will will be something we can bring back to you. My understanding is there is a desire for less than a thousand square feet. I do not think you can go, you know, way down. You can't cut that by eighty or ninety percent, I think, and perform this service well. So I just wanted to ensure that there's clarity for the council on that. Um, and as we've discussed, um, uh, in the armory project. Whether that is in the existing building or rebuilding the, the nineteen fifties shed that was on the north side. That could potentially, um, be new space, um, as well. Those are options. We would look at the Destination Marketing Fund assisting in, in the build out of space in the armory. Uh, for this type of use as well, uh, for a future budget conversation. So that, that's where I'm at. I would also suggest that you, um, give us enough direction for Jen to bring back. That the visitor's center will be in the, uh, the resolution, the visitor's center will be in the armory. Because, uh, we need clarity before this next open house. If the council's made a decision, I don't want to present the community an option that doesn't show it.
But aren't we awaiting some design iterations from our team? That talks about space allocation in the armory?
Well, there's two options, one that shows a visitor's center and one doesn't. And it's about how you prioritize the space inside of it at this point. I think that the, the council has heard many arguments about different perspectives on this, but there hasn't been direction yet. And again, I don't want to mislead the community in an open house later this month. If the council's made a choice here tonight, when I hear four of you saying, place it within this building.
I think it depends on the pro forma and whether the side shed works out too. Um, but I think we're at least signaling our virtues about this, rather than trying to be definite. Cause there are things that could impede this making sense. So I I I'd like to think that we're saying yes visitor's center in the armory. As long as it continues to make sense by the space and by the budget.
I agree.
Is, is that what you're looking for?
I'll try to narrow it and say, uh, a maximum of five hundred square feet.
I don't know. That's the thing.
I can't, I can't say that. I mean, I I want to see some design iterations. You know, I have some floor plan stuff here that has some square footage kind of allocations and what we can do and stuff. But I I I, right now, we should be talking about the, the, the temporary redesign that we're going to do here.
Well, that's not the, respectfully, Mister Mayor, that's not this agenda item. And I really don't need the council playing with floor plans and arranging floor plans. I need direction and allowing our expert team that you're paying a lot of money to.
Our desire is, our desire is to have visitor's center space in the armory.
So I I'm hearing that around a five hundred foot mark would be the maximum for the design team to have some clarity on direction for their work.
I think I would need to hear from macro as far as what a size visitor's center would be needed. And then once again, um, I do think.
Request is a thousand square feet.
Can the side shed be a thousand square feet?
It can be a lot of things, um, for you. The, the thing is, is to bring back to use the question about whether you want the expense of the addition compared to using the internal footprint of the existing building. Right? I think that is a policy discussion. It's about real money. Um, but the, the, the needs of ACRE have consistently been for about a thousand square feet for this space. It's what was committed to and, um, the lease, uh, master lease that was assigned in this past January. Can they move on that a little bit? They're going to be flexible. And, but I also don't want us to presume that a very small space is actually going to meet the demand. That we need for these services in the community.
So at this time, can we just say no more than a thousand square feet? Would that be enough clarity to move forward?
It, it is helpful to me for sure to have some square footage that the four of you can set as a maximum. Again, I'm not going to cherry pick between three, four, five, six, seven hundred. Um, but the council conversation and all the armory discussions has been waning on the thousand square feet being too much. Regardless of whether it's inside the existing building or inside the footprint of an addition.
Well, I I would say no more than a thousand square feet and then wait for the pro forma and the design to prove that. Whatever they come back with makes sense for all. So to move forward, I'd say no more than a thousand square feet and see what comes back if that is okay.
If if that gets this moving forward.
Listen, the, the reason, the reason I'm not sure we need a thousand square feet and, and, you know, it's impossible for all of us to get granular on this. At this point without seeing any kind of floor plans or anything, is that the little tiny kiosk on the mall seems to serve the needs of so many of our visitors. Pretty well. I mean, I I I am on that corner every single day. And people are very thrilled with the information that they're provided and the maps that they walk away with. Uh, I I don't think doing some kind of visitor's center with a stuffed bear in the corner really enhances that experience so much. Uh, I really think it's answering questions for people and handing out the information that they need so that they can be on their way. A thousand square feet sounds to like a lot to me, and that's why I think that we can haircut that significantly.
I I don't disagree, but to move this along, I'd say no more than a thousand square feet. With the preference that it be as small as it can be while still being completely functional and a happy space for the visitor's center. Like that, that's the direction I would give, because like I said, we're still waiting on floor plans and pro forma. I don't feel like we need to hamstring ourselves by saying five hundred now to find out that six hundred was the right amount.
I I I can agree. I I can say up to a thousand square feet, no problem. I have no idea what's included in that thousand square feet. I don't even know if the U S Forest Service is part of that square footage. I don't know if there's a sitting area. I don't know if there's a countertop. I don't know if there's a stuffed bear in the corner. I don't know any of that. So do I want to say sure, up to a thousand square feet? Sure.
I just want to give Sarah the clarity she needs. It's like, I'm trying to help here. Is that what?
Yeah, and I do need clarity. Like, if the council needs to see the layout of the visitor's center, we are very far away from that. The intention is a. The intention as a, as a landlord is to provide a white box. And then it's the responsibility of the vendor to determine how the, inside of that white box is best utilized for the services they're delivering. So that, that was our intention of what the relationship would look like and what we predicted back when the agreement was signed, um, eighteen months ago.
Yeah. No, and I just want to be really clear again that the reason why I'm saying all this is because we talked about five food vendors versus three, and I, I want our design and architecture team to be able to come back with the flexibility they need to make it make sense for us, especially from a pro forma standpoint and a usage of space standpoint. So, I, I think once again, we're saying yes to a visitor center and up to a thousand square feet as long as it meets these other parameters that this council hopefully is looking for as far as other use of space and pro forma.
John?
I would support this.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. Oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
It's all right, go ahead.
Apologies. Uh, I, I'm fine with that as long as there's clear direction that if that thousand needs to become eight hundred to accommodate the sort of primary goal of making the interior, the Armory program successful, then the design team has that discretion.
John?
Just to get through this, I will support a thousand square feet going forward. I would like more information going forward, but I am sure that it will be forthcoming. Thanks.
Thanks.
So I'm hearing consensus. It's up to you whether you want to put that in the form of a motion tonight or wait for us to bring a resolution back at your next meeting, um, that affirms that information. What we will still do is, is that at the open house, we will let the council know, we will let the community know that the council is intending to, uh, provide this service in this space.
That seems great. Does, do you want a motion now or a resolution later?
It's, it's your, I feel like this is a pretty clear record to point back to. We still will have a resolution at some point because this process has required resolutions for clarity, and multiple steps along the way, so it's, it's your call.
I'll wait for the resolution if that's okay then?
Uh huh.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I did hear there was a request to discuss, uh, the, um, Wheeler location. So I wasn't sure if there was direction also regarding that tonight.
Based on the conversation we had last night, it, it seemed like the direction was, in my opinion, was, uh, that that wasn't serving our community as well as the other locations and that maybe it was unnecessary.
Uh, let me just be clear. Are you asking for a full-throated yes or no on the Wheeler location at this point, like?
No, I just heard in this discussion a request for a conversation on it. I'm only bringing that back up to see if there's any direction. I'm not requesting it, right? And even though the numbers at certain locations vary greatly, it's also because they have different hours, um, and days of the week, and also because there's a different, um, visitor profile that might use certain locations over others. So for example, someone very big into arts and culture is much more likely to run into the visitor center at the Wheeler than, than perhaps using another location. And that's been a niche request of, uh, Accra over the years to consider that.
Yeah, uh, for me, I'd rather wait to do anything on that front and especially wait for Accra's input, um, which I think is invaluable in this situation to understand what is needed and what's not.
Yeah, I don't feel the need to do anything about Wheeler tonight. I have a feeling though that when the Armory facility is open, that it will be the place to go. So whether somebody stops by the Armory or somebody even stops by the kiosk on a mall or hopefully a airstream by that time, um, they will be directed to this because the experience here will be something that visitors will want to go through. Um, so, uh, thank you for bringing the Wheeler back up. I don't think we need to make any motion on it this evening. Uh, and we will just continue talking with Accra about the fact that we questioned the Wheeler Opera House's visitor center effectiveness. But we respect your opinion on that, and we've heard it for years, so we understand that there is an affinity for it. All right, any other information on visitor centers? Let's move on on our action items. Resolution number eighty-three. This is about the Accra temporary relocation to Armory Hall, tenant finish contract.
Ready? Okay. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Jennifer Phalen. I'm the Development Manager for the City of Aspen. Uh, with me is Rob Schober, the Asset Director. We're here tonight to, uh, consider a contract with North Peak Incorporated, a construction, um, company that, uh, the city is interested in awarding a contract to temporarily relocate Accra into the first floor of the Armory Hall prior to a more substantial renovation of that building. Uh, the reason we're asking to move Accra into that building in the future is they are currently located, uh, both a visitor, um, center space and a, um, back-of-house offices are located in the old powerhouse. And that building is scheduled to, uh, go under a major renovation, so we're looking for a temporary relocation of Accra into that Armory. This went through an RFP process, and what we're really looking at is for a tenant finish of the contract. It's primarily, uh, limited demolition, um, paint and, uh, carpet to spruce up the space while Accra is temporarily located there. Uh, we had two bids on the, um, scope and, um, both companies have experience working with the city and we recommended going with North Peak at the end of the day because their bid was lower for a greater amount of, um, scope. So, um-
Thank you.
I don't know, you know, usually these are consents, so.
Yeah, right. Um, guys, I would love to start this conversation off, um, by saying that, um, I not only support the contract, but I also would love to make sure that we are getting something that is extremely usable. So I would even be in support of additional funds, um, to make sure that, uh, this facility works and is usable for not just our Accra and visitor center, but for our community. My question would be, um, around, um, what I see missing here is perhaps an area for somebody to sit down. It looks as though there will be bathroom renovations on the first floor. It looks like there will be office space made available. And it looks like there is a, and I can't read the square footage here, but it looks like there's a small visitor's center, uh, window. I think it might be the same window that Utilities or Finance or whatever was using. I, I would like perhaps a better treatment than this. I can't really get, um, a feel from the graphic that I have in front of me, but I would be interested in having somewhere for visitors to sit down. And I would also be interested in, depending on how long, uh, we plan on using this building, to, um, utilize the basement space that is currently unused and whether that's used for meetings or some other uses that we've heard from our community that might be able to be in there. I, I'm supportive of this contract and I'm supportive of even a little bit more for the two reasons that I just said. One, I would love for this to be a welcoming visitor's center, not just a, um, peek-through window. Um, and I'd love, uh, for, so to have someplace for people to sit down and maybe even make the basement space usable. Uh, those would be kind of what I'm interested in.
If you want me to talk a little bit about the scope?
That'd be great.
The existing, um, and I'm sorry, the public probably won't know, uh, what we're talking about, or some will, obviously. The existing window that you're talking about, service window, is going to be basically for the visitors. That's where, um, Finance used to have their window. That is going to be enlarged and made, uh, accessible. So that's going to be some of that limited demolition, um, to create a better service counter for visitors walking into the entry lobby off Galena Street. There's going to be some limited demolition, uh, next to the stair down to the basement. That's to create a little bit more of a view line and that area right behind it, which used to be the mailroom and, uh, copy area for, um, when the Armory was City Hall, will be a lounge area with also information, um, handouts available, um, to look at and peruse as you go. And then next is the bathrooms for that space.
What, what is, uh, there used to be, inside the doorway to the left, there was, there's, uh, where the clerk's, uh, reception and stuff. What is that area scheduled for?
That is not in the scope. That was removed from the scope because of the cost of remodeling that space.
Okay, because I, I mean, uh, again, I want this to be well-done. I don't want it to feel wedged in there for several years and stuff. So, you know, what, all I'm sharing with you is like, let's not skimp. Let's not make this, you know, uh, an unpleasant visitor experience for sure. And if that required us opening up that space or some other space to have, uh, appropriate accommodations, then, then I would, then I would want to add that. And I don't know what it takes to do that in that location or whether that should be the basement space. But, uh, I, from what you just said, that outside the bathrooms, there might be a small sitting area with some brochures?
Yeah, the, the, Accra's talking about it as a small lounge area for people to sit. And they said the number one thing that people are looking for is our bathrooms when they arrive.
For sure, for sure. Um, okay, uh, with that, I don't know if other council members have any input, if you have any questions, or if you would like me to ask some of the members that are representing Accra here, um, about my suggestions. I, 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 I don't really have a sense about whether it's necessary or not.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I'd also add just on that with talking about the basement. You're talking about a small area of people coming into the building and that is also a building that is housing some city staff. So I do think you need to think a little bit about security and also wayfinding of going downstairs to find, I, I'm not sure what you're kind of imagining for expanded usage.
I think there's been a lot of people that have approached us for, um, different space needs and, um, it's just difficult to continue to see that building be underutilized and to think that it could be for, underutilized for more years to come, um, when we have the opportunity during a renovation. Again, I don't have, um, I don't have, you know, uh, any depictions of what I can expect, so I'm only saying, you know, I'm only going off of what I'm hoping is there. And if it's not there, then I'm asking for council to support more funds to get it there. So I guess this is where I would look to Debbie and, and say, what have you seen of the renovation plans? Is there anything that you think should be included that isn't? Or is it adequate as it is? And that kind of thing. So if you don't mind coming up to the desk.
While they're moving, I just want to, uh, re- remind council, the reason we're here is not just a contract approval. You provided me explicit direction that I needed to bring this conversation back to you because it was a split vote on even funding this renovation at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar level. So I have directed staff to stay within scope of what was the appropriation that was made by the council. Secondly, while they're coming up, I also want to remind council, the more you get into this building, the more likely you are to trigger new codes, um, that will increase your expenses substantially. And that is something that is of a concern of staff and we've had to work, monitor very closely in getting to this scope. There are things Accra asked for that would trigger significant changes to the entire building at substantial cost. And finally, the only reason this is coming before council is for Accra's use. If you continue for the relocation of city staff into this space, this is not a necessary expense.
Can you just talk a little bit about?
If I could jump in bef-
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Thanks so much. You know, let, let's not forget those numbers that we saw on the North Mill Powerhouse visitation. Maybe this shouldn't be a visitor center at all at this point in time. Maybe, maybe this building doesn't warrant having our visitors come in, um, without spending a fortune on creating a, a renovated building that's then going to be torn out soon. May- maybe our existing visitor centers are adequate at this point and maybe this should only be temporary office space, which I'm not in support of in general. But if we're gonna do it, maybe we shouldn't even be contemplating a visitor's center here and that this should just be office space. We, we're clearly not missing the mark with a lot of people, um, becau- i- if we're looking at the numbers from the North Mill Visitor Center, um, having to be served by this location. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. So just, uh, you know, just simply what I was just talking about. I mean, it, it, do you, do you feel from what you've seen that this will be a warm, inviting and comfortable place for visitors, most likely that are just getting into town, that are looking for some direction, some wayfinding, a bathroom, and maybe a place to sit down?
Thank you, Tori. Uh, Debbie Braun for the record, President and CEO of the Aspen Chamber. Bill, you're very astute on the numbers at the Mill Street. I agree completely with you. And that's because when we move there temporarily, you're taking all the drive traffic and you're pushing them down a very busy intersection down to that spot. And people are not finding it and they're not going there. So when we had the Rio Grande and prior to twenty twenty, those numbers were higher. It's a really bad location, especially if you tried to like take a RV and put it into that, uh, lot down there. We also are sitting right in front of the tow lot that the pick, or the parking department puts their tow vehicles right at the top of the lot there, so it is difficult to get in and out. So I would agree with you. The numbers have gone down significantly over the years and it is not the place to be taking, um, our visitors, so agree on that. Tori, to your point, we want to activate that space too. And we're gonna do what it takes to stay within your budget, which you guys were very clear about the two hundred thousand dollars. We're not even getting new bathrooms, which is a shame because you've got your Saturday market coming in there on Saturday and we've committed to staying open on Saturdays and they're pretty dismal. But we understand that that could trigger some more permitting and that's not what we're looking for. So we're doing as much as we can to brighten and light, lighten up the space through the choices of paint and carpeting. The area when you first walk in where there's the big safe and that is not part of the scope of work, we'd love to activate that. We would love to put chairs. We'd love to put, um, historical photos up and really make it nice. What I don't think a lot of you understand is when our Floridas or, or when our visitors are coming in from, let's say, Florida, Texas, California, they've just come over Independence Pass. They have found our location and they are shaking because they've never driven anything like that before. And they need a moment to acclimate. So to get them to sit down, look at a map. Yesterday, when I walked out of the office, an elderly couple was sitting in the chairs that we have activated out on the lawn. They were eating an apple. They were looking at a map. They were sitting in the shade and they were having just the best moment before they had to get back into the car. That serves a lot of day trippers coming up over the pass. They'll stop into the visitor's center. They want to get acclimated. What can we do in four hours in Aspen? So we give them all that information. They hang out for a little bit and they go on their way. So if you were to allow us to activate that little, um, vestibule area, we would happily do that. Um, and then regarding downstairs, um, I do think there's an opportunity down there. So many nonprofits and business organizations are looking for conference space or an area to go. to go, and Accra has talked about that we would happily coordinate that effort of people coming up and down through like a, you know, if you needed to rent down there, you would, you could rent through Accra, just the space, and then we could keep our eye on it since we are in the building. We think we could do that if the community wanted to activate that lower space as well. But right now, we've been very cognizant of wanting to stay within your budget because we know this is only temporary, and we know our offices aren't in there forever, but we do agree with Tori in providing a very welcoming, nice place. We're already looking at our capital expenses and how that we'll be spending money to augment what you haven't been able to do. So if you allow us to use a little bit more of the space, we would, we agree, we think the park space outside could be wonderful for people to hang out there as well. So we'd happily manage the chairs coming in and out and in that area as well. But really, it's your choice. We're your vendor, and we'll do what you want, but I do appreciate the fact that we've been doing visitor services here for 25 years. So we do understand that people shaking when they're coming over the pass, and they do want a place to sit for a moment before they head out on their way. So, thank you very much. I hope that was helpful.
Thanks, Ed. Yeah, Sam?
My only comment is, I guess, not an apology, but sort of that like, we don't expect Accra to be in the Armory office space forever, so I'm sorry if you have to move multiple times. Other than that, I'm ready to move on and approve this resolution. I think it's fine as is.
Sure, John.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eighty-three.
Seconded.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the discussion. I wanted further discussion from council members to get your feelings about, or get some information even from our team about what it would take to activate that space that's inside the front door. It's about 350 square feet. How, how, you know?
You have some accessibility issues with that space? It ramps down. We had looked at using that space, we cut it out of the scope because of the costs. The more you start playing with that space, I think the more you'll have to upgrade that building. You might have to upgrade the bathrooms, which, rather than just to paint, which means more money, and you'll totally bust the budget. Do you want to add to that?
I just think maybe for reference, you know, I was thinking about it, that the, we did an upgrade on the parking garage restrooms, about the similar size, and that was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so just food for thought.
The bathrooms are usable currently?
Sure, yes.
Yes.
Sure. Okay. So you're telling me there's nothing else you can do? The scope of work that has been outlined is really the accessible work that we can do without getting into hundreds of thousands of dollars of ADA compliance with other spaces?
I'm not going to say hundreds of thousands of dollars because I don't know what that number is, but I will say the more you start expanding your scope, the more building code requirements we will probably have to meet, which will add increased costs to this project. We have a budget of $200,000. Our soft costs are about $25,000 with a building permit. I'm keeping $25,000 for contingency. I've talked to Accra about spending that down once we do demolition to make sure we don't have any surprises. Our hard costs are about $150,000, so there is a little play, but that's going to be eaten up by a new door, by some paint. It's pretty limited improvements.
By surprises.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second, so we'll get to that vote in just a second. I guess I would just say that I hope that we execute this as best we can. I personally, if, if there is some way to signal that, if, if we come up a gallon short of paint, that you can go over this budget for another gallon of paint and stuff like that. I mean, I just hope we do this right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. No further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote for resolution number eighty-three, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Counselor, our last item this evening on our agenda is for some board and commission appointments. We've had a round of board interviews recently. We did request that we will go to another round of interviews for Kids First, but we have a couple others that we could go ahead and take care of perhaps and get people in seats. So I want to start with the Grant Steering Committee. We have two regular member positions open, and we had Ann Mullins reapplying and Morgan Fixel, who is applying also for the Grant Steering Committee. Are there, is there any discussion from folks regarding either of the two candidates?
Did you, did you say there's two regular seats, Tori?
It's, yes, two regular positions are open, and we have two applicants. Ann Mullins was the chair, I think, of the Grant Steering Committee, and Morgan Fixel is a new applicant.
I think we'd be lucky to have both of them.
Okay. So by virtue of a motion, I'll make a motion to appoint Morgan Fixel and Ann Mullins to the Grant Steering Committee.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I get, do I need a roll call? Can I have a roll call vote for Grant Steering Committee appointments of Morgan Fixel and Ann Mullins?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. The next board is HPC with one regular member position open. We had an applicant named Dakota Sevier. Does any, do any council members have any comments or questions regarding the applicant?
My only question, was that Jeff Helferdy's spot? Did he want to reapply? Did he, do we know anything about that?
This is one regular member position open.
Okay. I thought Jeff had, had an expiring term in July.
He may be reapplying in the future, but no, in this round, we've had Dakota Sevier for HPC, one regular member.
I'm not supportive of, of that applicant for this role.
Okay. Do you want to expound on that a little, or no?
I, I think I just didn't find her to be fully qualified in her ability to understand and read plans and get into the details of an architectural presentation.
Thank you. John, did you have any comments or questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept Dakota Sevier for HPC, one regular member position.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for HPC, one regular member position for Dakota Sevier?
I think he's concerned because Sam made the original motion for her.
I got cut off. I don't know if I completed it.
Okay.
I just thought he did. I can't read your lips. Moustache and beard, you know?
And your voice is scratchy, so it's hard, it's hard to read your lips. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please, for Dakota Sevier for HPC?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. The next one for consideration was CCLC. We have one regular member position open. We had Kiki Raj, who is reapplying for her position on CCLC, and we had Deborah Sevier, who interviewed with us as well. It is one regular member position open. Do any council members have any comments or questions regarding the applicants?
I would put Kiki Raj back on. I'm always usually in favor of incumbent, and there's only one spot, as much as I appreciate the other candidate.
Thank you. Any other input? Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to put Kiki Raj on CCLC, reappointed.
I'll second. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for CCLC and the reappointment of Kiki Raj?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. And we do appreciate Deborah for her application. We encourage her to keep an eye out for other boards and positions that she may be interested in. The next one is Kids First. We have one regular and one alternate member position open. We had Steph Reveal, who has been co-chair of Kids First, to be, has reapplied. Then we also had Emily Kolb apply and interview with us, but as you all are aware, we had an intention to make previous applicants aware that there was a, an appointment that was available, and we had some interest for another round of interviews. So this evening, I would want to ask for council members' support or non-support of reappointing Steph Reveal to the one regular position. Then we will, then we will go out, reschedule the interviews for the other applicants, but I just wanted to see if there's an interest by council members this evening to reappoint Steph Reveal to Kids First.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I could take a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to reappoint Steph and Reveal to Kids First.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for reappointing Steph Reveal to Kids First, please? In the regular, in the one regular position open?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. The last board is P and Z. There are two alternate positions open at this time. Charlie Tarver interviewed with us at our last series of interviews. He was serving on HPC but had a desire to serve on P and Z and is looking to get an appointment to be in Z and resign from HPC. Are there any questions or comments about the applicant?
I'm happy with both of them. That's fine.
I could take a motion for Charlie Tarver to be appointed to P and Z for the alternate position.
Can you do both at the same time? All right, I'd make a motion to appoint Charlie Tarver to the alternate position of P and Z.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote for Charlie Tarver being appointed to P and Z in an alternate position?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. Thank you guys very much. That concludes our agenda, yes?
Do we have another name for P and Z? I thought you said two names in response.
No.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Charlie will have to resign from...
HPC.
HPC.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Guth?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, as always, to Grassroots TV. We appreciate you. We will be back next Monday for our scheduled council work session. Oh, fifth week, it's the thirtieth, or it's the twenty-ninth. Never mind, we will see you in two weeks. Have a good...